Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Tuesday, August 5th Town Council meeting. Roll call, Ms. Garcia, please.
Mayor Eaton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Councilmember Bucelada.
Here.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Here.
Councilmember Bessina.
Here.
Councilmember Bedford.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much for that. Item number three and four, please join me in a moment of silence, and then the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Item number five is our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of Town Council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I have one for, I have some for public hearing, and I've got one for the call to the public. Ms. Lehman.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Lehman, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council. I'm speaking about two things in this call to the public, two things that you've heard me speak about several times in the past, Felix Road and the town calendar. I'll start with Felix Road. The speed limit was posted at 35 miles per hour when I moved here in 2020. From your Town Council meeting minutes of April 5th, 2021, I quote, this is the manager's report, "Mr. Billingsley stated that a speed study was conducted on Felix Road from Hun Highway to Arizona Farms Road and did a full engineering evaluation regarding posted speed limits. Engineering determined that they would change the speed limit on Felix Road to 45 miles per hour from Hun Highway to Heritage Road and will continue to be posted at 50 miles per hour in the county from Heritage Road to Arizona Farms Road," end quote. So in my discovery, the Town Council, I guess, took tacit or passive action by just approving this. This was in a town manager report. It was never an item for the public to comment on. And then I will quote from a Pinellas County Central article, "The Town Council meeting held on February 3rd, 2025 in Florence, Arizona focused on pressing community concerns, particularly regarding traffic, safety, and infrastructure improvements. Residents voiced their frustrations over increasing traffic speeds and heavy truck usage on North Felix Road, which they described as dangerous bypass for non-local drivers," end quote. A group of us Florence citizens living off of Felix Road created the Felix Road Noise Coalition. We presented to the Town Council coincidentally on August 5th of 2024, one year. We presented several solutions to the Town Council at that time. Here we are, a year later, with virtually no solutions that have been implemented to help us with the noise, the speed, and the truck problems on Felix Road. Lots of meetings, lots of discussions, and here it is, a year later. It's a big disappointment. My other issue is about the town calendar. I think this is my fourth time to talk about it. I printed it out yesterday. There's nothing filled in about any meeting past August 7th, except the holiday on Labor Day. I just coincidentally stumbled upon the fact that my community services meeting, which is scheduled for next Friday, has been canceled. So that's not on the calendar, haven't been notified yet. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lehman. So I do know, as far as the town manager, I know that there has been numerous updates. Can you please get with that group and make sure that we're up to date on what, I know that we've done some work. Okay, thank you so much. All right, we have, it looks like, one other one online. Ms. Bonnie Barriola. Good evening, Bonnie.
I'm Bonnie Barriola. Administration has my address. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, I'm addressing the sale of the Bruning Kent Building and want to use some of those monies for. A suggestion has been made to put the funds to use in the redevelopment district. I am a member of another town project committee planning for the Jason Lopez Memorial to be held in the Jason Lopez Heritage Park on December 27. At the first meeting of the planning committee on July 30th, which is just last week, the committee was excited to learn a prior attempt at renaming the park after Jason included a statue of him and his two small children. A member of the committee actually has a copy of the planned statue. Because the artist who made the sample has passed a day or so after the meeting, your staff asked me if I would have time to research artists who make statues. I've only had time to contact one who has made one of a fireman for surprise and one of two police officers for another valley city. I discovered life-size bronze statues cost more than I would have imagined, but they are made locally here in Arizona and not sent to foreign countries to be made. I think we had planned to get donations to pay for the statue and associated plaques, but since Heritage Park is in the redevelopment area, and would you please suggest the feasibility of using some of the funds from the sale of the Bruning Kent Building to pay for the statue and associated plaques and signage when y'all discuss the Bruning Kent Building later in your, later tonight? That portion of the staff report about the Bruning Kent Building does say a suggestion is to use the funds for the redevelopment area. Plus, if we are to have the statue and plaques and new signings complete by December, we must make decisions soon. I, we could continue attempting to get donations, but would like a backup plan. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Barriola. I see no one else online. Is there anyone else in person that'd like to speak before I close the call to the public? Not seeing any, I am now going to call the first, or going to close the first call to the public. If you decide you want to speak, have no fear. We have another one at the end. So moving on to public hearings, number item six, A, Public Hearing on Ordinance Number 762-25, A Discussion, Approval/Disapproval of an Ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, Approving a Minor General Plan Amendment to the Land Use Map for the Approximately 40.93 Acres Property Located East of Adaway Road and South of Judd from the Suburban Neighborhood Place Type to the Industrial Place Type, Assessor APN 210-45-020 and PZ-24-39. A.J. Monroe.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. It's good to be with you this evening. As the mayor mentioned, we are here to hold a public hearing and consider a minor general plan amendment for Light Horse Energy Storage Project. This application was submitted by the Rose Law Group on behalf of Esvolta Development LLC for a large-scale battery energy storage system, often referred to as a BES. Following my brief presentation, I will be inviting John Gillespie to provide a more detailed review of their project. However, before getting to their presentation, I would like to make a few comments. Their presentation tonight, you're going to hear about the project site, you're going to hear about the town's 2022 general plan designation for the property, you're going to hear about adjacent place types designations that were called out in that plan, you're going to hear about surrounding properties, current adjacent ownership and land uses. John will be spending some time talking about the conceptual site plan, and he will be talking in much greater detail about proposed infrastructure projects, including the north-south corridor and Pinellas County's Central Arizona Project Parkway that are all in that study area. As you are considering this minor general plan amendment this evening, please remember to review and then use the review questions that are outlined in the 2022 general plan. Those questions have been provided to you in the staff report, and John will, I know, spend some detailed time going over those questions and his response to those questions. But for the sake of those here in attendance and those watching, I'd like to talk through those questions straight away. So the questions that I would ask you to consider in your, as you review and listen to this applicant's case, that you want to think about the suitability of the current land use and circulation classification. You should consider to what extent the proposed change use will have, and how it's supported, how it supports the goals and objectives of the general plan, how it conforms to the proposed range of land uses, densities, and intensities of use, how it conforms to the hierarchy of transportation systems set forth in the general plan, and results in compatible development patterns. We would like to avoid the creation of isolated uses that will place a burden on services and circulation systems. You should consider unique physical characteristics of the site that present opportunities or constraints for development under the existing and proposed classifications. We should think about the ability of the water and sewer systems to accommodate development resulting from the proposed amendment without system extensions or improvements. The town's ability to police and provide fire services so that we can provide adequate protection to the community. The ability to use existing and proposed public and private open spaces and recreational facilities, schools, library facilities, to meet the projected demand of future development without reducing services below community standards. A fiscal impact should be considered when looking at the project to evaluate the projected revenues and additional cost of public facilities and services to accommodate the projected increases or decreases in population and development that could occur as a result of the general plan amendment. Impacts on the ability of the community to sustain its physical and cultural resources, including air quality, water quality, energy, and natural and human-made resources necessary to meet the demands of present and future residents. And the changes, if any, in any physical condition to state or federal laws or policies that may substantiate the proposed amendment. As I, as I mentioned earlier, the applicant during their presentation will walk through their responses to those questions that are outlined in the 2002 general plan. The written responses are included in your staff report. I'd like to briefly talk about public participation to date. This is a minor amendment to the general plan, which requires a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as a public hearing at the Town Council. A public hearing was held at the Plan Commission on June 5th of this year in this room. There were no members of the public providing comment during that public hearing. During that meeting, the Plan Commission members raised a number of questions regarding the site, emergency service protocols, proximity to the canal. However, ultimately, after hearing the petitioner's case and the questions, to their comments, forwarded to you for your consideration a recommendation with a four to zero vote. In terms of staff's findings, the staff finds that the minor general plan amendment shows that the industrial place type, which would allow for that battery energy storage solution system, or BES, is more appropriate than the suburban neighborhood classification. Ongoing utility infrastructure investments by SRPs and partners, and the proposed large-scale transportation infrastructure projects of the state and the county prime the northern sections of Florence for industrial development. We would like to point out a concern. The minor, this minor amendment is coming before you, before a general, a major general plan amendment that staff is aware of in the coming months. The petitioner acknowledging that has proposed in their major PUD amendment that you'll hear if this, if this step moves forward, to really expand the setbacks of this proposed development because of its industrial nature. In the coming months, what you'll be hearing from adjacent property owners are major general plan amendments seeking the same industrial place type, but as it sits today, in the present moment, the surrounding properties of this to the west and to the south are still, still identified on our general plan place type map as suburban neighborhood. But more importantly, the PUD that associates with this area identifies this area as single-family residential. So there is a timing question that we want to bring to your attention, because it should be brought out and discussed. However, this applicant has proposed some setbacks and some additional landscaping that may, may sort that out anyway, and you'll, you're heard much more about that from the petitioner. At this time, okay, so two, two other things before I pass it on to John. A vote no tonight would be considered, would be a denial of the minor general plan amendment and ordinance, and this place type would remain suburban neighborhood as per the 2022 general plan. A vote yes this evening would amend the 2022 general plan to, to change the place type from suburban neighborhood to industrial, where this would be considered a, an industrial land use. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jonathan, John Gillespie, who is going to provide a more detailed report and, and further information on their application. Mr. Gillespie.
Good evening. Thank you, A.J. Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. John Gillespie with the Rose Law Group. Happy to be here on behalf of Esvolta, who is a battery and storage developer, nationwide developer, and we're really excited about this project that they're, they're bringing here to, to the town. Chris, the Dobson family is also here with us tonight, grateful for them. They're the property owners, and they own the land to the south and the west of us as well. I have, I know there's a companion case with the general plan and the zoning case, Mayor Eaton, so if it's okay with you, I'd like to give kind of my full presentation that kind of encompasses both aspects of that, and then if you have questions on, on separate items, happy to take them.
Sure, please do.
Thank you. So Lighthouse Energy Storage, to give you just an overview of what, the excellent project that we're delivering here to the town. It's a 400-megawatt utility-scale battery storage system. So to put that in the context, that's powering 200,000 homes for, for eight hours. So it's a very significant project within the SRP system of the northern part of, of the town. The best project, to put it simplest, it's, it's storing excess power when it's generated, and then being able to redistribute it when demand is highest, typically in, in an evening time. So if there's, there's excess power that's being generated from the system, it goes to a battery energy storage facility, and then it's able to be released to, to provide that grid stability throughout the town and the region. This is being sought by SRP in order to enhance their, their capabilities here in the northern part of the town, and to further also the overall grid of the region. Electrical reliability is really important for, for several facets. One of them is, is the economic growth and job creation really rely on having reliable sources of power, and, and that's what a BES project can bring. Talk about this on a couple slides as well. This project generates significant property tax revenues directly to the town, looking at a projection of 1.5 million over the life of the project. The town, the school district, the Florence School District also sees an increased property tax. I don't have, I'm getting called, covered up by my tax, but I want to say it's 5 million in, in additional revenues that, that's not existing today, and then 10.4 million to, to other taxing districts in the county. And to give you, A.J. gave a little bit of an intro to this, but I'd like to jump into the context of why this location makes a lot of sense for, for this proposed use. BES projects are typically located next to utility substations. So, oh, thank you. So the SRP existing facility that's north of Judd Road there will be able to connect directly into that project. So that means no additional high transmission lines carrying energy throughout the, throughout the city, so really the town and the region. So that's one of the key benefits, is our proximity directly to SRP. As I mentioned, it's a 40-acre parcel next to the CAP Canal. We, we have an open space area, I'll show on our site plan, that shows that our, our preliminary plans will be well out of that open space area and preserve that, that general plan classification for the, for the town. There's a trend of development, and to the general plan point, this is really important to see that a lot of these industrial users have been locating in this part of the town. And so a BES use fits into that existing fabric, and that's kind of grown naturally by the market demands. And so this general plan amendment is, is aligning with that, that change that has, has happened in this part of the town, where there's, there's industrial zoning to the, to the west, and then the, on the county side of things to the north, solar development, BES development, a gas plant, the SRP site. As I had mentioned, there is a current application for the Florence Tech Park to our south and to our west, and that further shows the industrial fabric that's being created here, west of the CAP Canal, and the future corridor for the, for ADOT. When you look at the, the context where we are changing our site to a commercial industrial designation, but this, there's no homes planned or existing within 1,500 feet of the site. So there's a significant buffer for these industrial uses that are, that are west of the canal. And despite that, a BES project is just kind of known as being already a quiet use, similar to, you know, if you, when we were doing the moment of silence, I could hear the air conditioning running in the room. That, that's the, the level of sound that's, that's associated with someone who's standing next to, to one of these projects. And the, the key aspect as well, when you're thinking about the general plan and what it does for the city, on, on the town on a whole, it's not generating traffic. It's not using library services. It's not using, you know, there's not a heavy police calls that are coming to an empty site, and those type of things. It's a low-impact use, but yet still contributes in terms of, of tax revenue and development impact fees, and does more than its share to contribute to the town's benefit. So we've mentioned some of this, of just the, the demand from SRP for additional sources of power, and particularly on the northern side of, of the town, that this contributes significantly to that, that goal, and provides that reliability that, that, that the town and SRP are after as well. It can be, because it's a storage project, it can be distributed to the general grid, so it's like APS and to other electrical consumers to, to really bring down the overall cost of energy in our, in our region. To just highlight again some of those key economic benefits that we're seeing, additional property tax revenue, where there's nothing being generated from a vacant agricultural piece now. This is new revenue for the city, and for the school district, and for the county. And the impact fees associated with, with this project will contribute more than its fair share when you look at the minimal town services that, that we would be needing. So a minor general plan amendment, this has been covered a little bit, but we're currently in industrial designation within the, the Greater Dobson Farms PUD. That does have industrial designations within that PUD, and what we're asking is to, to change this location from suburban neighborhood to industry district as a part of this larger trend that we're seeing in, in development in this area. We'd preserve the, the general plan designation for open space on the east of the, the site, and give the, the respect for the corridor that hopefully will be built in my lifetime to the east with, with ADOT's north-south freeway. So the site here, this shows kind of the, the old Dobson Farms PUD from, from 2010 and the vision that was, that was established there. That's, that's changing with the landowners, what's happening here in this part of the town. So it, BES uses would technically be permitted in PUDs in the town, so we're, we are asking for a major PUD amendment to allow it at this location within, within the Dobson Farms PUD. And that change is from a residential low character, which would be for kind of single-family development, to commercial and industrial, which would allow this BES use. So land, we've covered this, to the west and the south, this current application to also change those to a commercial industrial designation. I'll show on the next page kind of how we've designed the site for both of those scenarios, whether it's suburban neighborhood or, or, or commercial industrial. So we've, we've gone through, many thanks to planning staff, the fire department, and your, your departments who have reviewed our project preliminarily, and we've, we've, we're not in this specific site plan, it's a middle stage yet, but we've been able to gather their feedback and their comments, and get their support for our preliminary design, which, to give some insight into that. So a battery enclosure is typically about eight to 10 feet high, and they are arranged in rows on, on concrete pads, and that's what you're seeing outlined in red right there. This project would have two access drives from Judd Road. I don't know that you, I can, there you go. So you can see those two drives that provide the circulation, and that's the consultation that we received from the fire department, was to ensure that there's adequate circulation throughout the entire site. The private substation would be at the northwest corner, where it's closest to that SRP existing facility and can connect directly to, to that site. As you can see on the right, that's, that's kind of showing how far the open space designation area would, would come, and also the overlap with the, the corridor, which ADOT released today, an update on that, that their intent is actually to place that right away on the east side of the CAP Canal. So there's an update from ADOT. Now, we've committed that we're going to have a significant setback on our, our site itself, so that's 100-foot setback to the eight-to-10-foot enclosure. So visually, that's a, that's a significant setback with our, our fence that will be an eight-foot wall, perimeter wall enclosing the site, and providing, I think, the flexibility for, to really be a good neighbor and a good transition to, to whatever springs up around, around us, and landscaping outside of, outside of the wall. And again, this, this design was, was done in tandem with consultation with, with the fire department, and as we get into more specific permitting processes, that, that'll continue. Want to share, just, I'll just highlight here some of the key things. Okay, now I'm going to be in trouble to go back. Call, 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 call. Thank you. So obviously, a review process that we've already been through with, with the fire department, taking the feedback upon site access around the enclosures, providing an emergency responder staging area to highlight, you know, we get questions about how does, how do you respond, you know, to a fire in, in, at one of these projects? And while they're very, they are rare, you might not And while they're very, they are rare, you might not, you know, we watch the news, it doesn't feel rare, but it's a rare occurrence that there's a fire issue. That staging area essentially is for fire to wait and you let these things burn. So it's not a, it's not something where you send firefighters into a building. It's a self-contained unit. It alerts, the technology is really good on this. You know, ES Volta is the owner-operator of this site. They get alerted that there's an issue and the systems come in place to mitigate that and to prevent propagation of a fire in that situation. And so that response plan will work directly with the fire department to get into the details of what that response plan is, provide training. ES Volta provides specific training opportunities for your personnel to make sure that they are completely on board, understand how to handle a fire like that. I've heard questions about, okay, well, it's a fire, it's going to, you know, creating, you know, plumes of smoke and how is this going to affect surrounding properties? Our consultation there is essentially that, you know, if the next-door neighbor or your home happened to catch on fire, it's a comparable toxicity that would come even from a home to one of these battery fires. So God forbid something like that would happen, but that's a fair comparison to say that it's not releasing this great plume that's going to be destructive. And again, the separation is a really key aspect for this project. We did complete neighborhood outreach as part of the town's process here. As had mentioned, there's no existing residential within 3,000 feet of the site and there's no platted or planned within 1,500 feet of the site. And so we held our neighborhood meeting. We didn't have attendance at that meeting and the public hearing comment was sent. We haven't received inquiries directly to us or opposition or concerns about our project. With that, I'm happy to, and that was two items, so sorry to go a little bit long, but I'm happy to take any questions that Mayor or Council might have about our project.
Okay, well, thank you so much. And I do realize that you were kind of wrapping two projects into one, so we're going to benefit from it here in just a minute, so I appreciate that. So before we get into questions, I will need to open up the public hearing and then we'll come back to council after we close it and council may have additional information for your in questions. So at this time, I am going to open up the public hearing for the, public hearing for the ordinance 762-25. If there's anyone online or in-house, I do have two speakers and another document, so I will go in-house first. So Melissa Cordero? I think it looked like Cordero. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Melissa Cordero. I'm an Air Force veteran and the Arizona Lead Organizer with Veterans Power America, which is a program of common defense. I've served in combat zones and in some of the most remote, unforgiving environments on this earth, places with climates very similar to our Arizona climate and desert. When the US military sends people like me to these environments, we don't rely on fragile energy systems. We use battery storage systems and microgrids to power our bases because they are safe and resilient and built to last. That same reliable proven technology is exactly what the Light Horse Energy Storage will bring to Florence. There's been talk about whether battery storage is safe. Some folks point to the Moss Landing Fire in California earlier this year, but let's be clear, that was an outdated site built under old codes with known risks. Since then, building codes and safety regulations like the ones we've heard here tonight have been completely rewritten. The Light Horse Project will be built under the newest, strictest standards in the country, specifically designed to protect the surrounding community environment, emergency responders and workers on site. This is not the old way of doing things. This is the next generation of clean, safe energy. And the benefits, they are real. These battery systems store energy when the sun is strongest, when we're using the least electricity and release it back to the grid during peak hours, when demand and prices spike. That helps stabilize the grid, lowers the risk of blackouts during heat waves and most importantly, saves people money on their electric bills. And not just businesses or developers, we're talking about real relief for families who live paycheck to paycheck, families who dread the electric bill every summer because they can't afford to run the AC all day. Projects like Light Horse help bring those costs down and that's a game changer for working-class folks like me and in low-income communities. Here's the truth, when we choose clean energy here in Florence, it doesn't stop at the town. It says the president, it sends a message to the next town, the next city, to the leaders across the state. It says that small towns matter, that rural communities can lead and that veterans, families, teachers and working people, not just corporations, deserve the benefits of a stronger energy future. As a veteran, I know what it means to protect what matters most. That's what this project does, that's why I'm here, that's why I care. It powers our homes, supports our schools, our first responders and makes sure Florence is ready, not just today, but for what's coming. So tonight, Mayor and Council, I ask you and I urge you, stand with us, stand with veterans. I know there's some up here, I think, and let's make sure Florence is ready, not just for today, but for what's coming. Thank you.
Thank you so much and also thank you for your service to our country. Our next speaker is Kathleen Lehman.
Good evening again, Kathleen Lehman, resident Florence. I'm speaking about against 6A and 6B. The Rose Law Group on behalf of ES Volta Development LLC is submitting a minor and major amendment to the Light Horse Energy Project for Battery Energy Storage System and Rezoning of a Portion of the Dobson Farm PUD. As you've seen from the pictures, it's at Arizona Farms in Judd Road. A minor amendment was approved two months ago by the Planning and Zoning and my concerns are this. The Rose Law Group is one of the primary groups working to secure our desert land for solar and other energy projects throughout the state of Arizona and Pinal County. From the Pinal Central Newspaper on August 23rd, 2024, the title of the article is, quote, "Solar Applications Bombard Pinal County." Pinal Community Development Director Brett Billingsley said one source says between 2016 and 2023, there were 62 new solar projects in Arizona, including 19 in Pinal County. "I think a lot of areas in the state are seeing pressure," he said, unquote. I have some questions. Why wasn't a battery energy storage system requested in the original solar application? Why does another vendor have to come in putting another layer of cost upon everybody? The other thing I noticed in the packet was the staff had some concern over perimeter landscaping. I'm also concerned about that. The solar farm, which is up and running now, there's no landscape around it. They already removed all of the trees in that area. I don't know if they're ever going to put anything in there, but it sure is ugly to drive by. Was new landscaping required as part of the approval? I know it was recommended. These kinds of things, if you're going to approve them, they should blend into our neighborhood, they should look like Florence and they should have landscaping. So my closing questions are, how do we, residents of Florence, benefit from this battery energy storage system? What I saw in the presentation is there'll be some revenue, but it's really commercial industrial development in that area. If that's where we're going with the town, that's kind of the first that I've heard of that. Will we get any lower energy bills from SRP? How about the residents who are going to be buying in the Dobson Farm PUD? Will they benefit from that battery storage? They said they could store a lot of energy there. I don't think that's going to happen. I'm also concerned after this presentation tonight about potential electrical fires and how quickly we could get there. There isn't a fire station that close. Does that mean we have to build another one? The wind blows through that area, as many of you know, a fire could spread very quickly to a home that's only 1,500 feet away.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lehman. Is there, I have a hand raised online, Susan Maldonado? Good evening.
Okay. I have a question. I didn't fully hear what the gentleman was saying about the toxicity of a fire happening as comparison to a home being on fire. Is that one battery, the whole plant, a portion of the plant? Like, how many batteries need to go up to be as toxic as a house fire? That's my question and concern.
All right, thank you so much. Is there anyone else online or anyone else in person that would like to speak to this topic? Not seeing any. At this time, I'm going to close the call to the public for this item. So I do want to, before I open it up to council for comments, I do want to also address that we do, we are, we're handed tonight a document with some signatures, a number of signatures from Arizonans for a Clean Economy in support of the construction of the Lighthouse Energy Storage Project. Please just read that into the minutes as well. I would like to open it up to council and I would like to be the first one. So, and then we may have some other questions for us. So two things, first of all, I would like to thank our Planning and Zoning Commission. So I sent out as a reminder a link to our council members and those online can see that Planning and Zoning asks a lot of questions and I attribute a lot of these decisions to their question. This was a very in-depth questioning that they give and as our liaison, the Vice Mayor also participates with that. So first of all, I want to thank, because a lot of the questions that were answered were in, on my mind, were answered during that and then re-watching it again and hopefully the other council members have too. So there's a couple of things. So as we move into the battery storage, the technology is changing and it has changed a lot. Now, if you will remember in the spring, knowing that we had the possibility of future battery storage, we passed the most current ICC codes, the 2024 codes. We've attached it to our 2018 codes in reference to this, this whole section of battery storage. The National Fire Protection Association and the ICC, the international code, has worked very closely together to create this. And this was something that we talked about that was very important for us to be proactive for once, that we're not being reactive to something and very proud that we were able to do that. So any projects moving forward will be done under that added codes. With the technology and a couple of things that we look at there, is this the right place for this? And I think the 505 coming through, again, I'll agree, will it be in my lifetime? Will it be in any of our lifetimes? We don't know. We all know that there's no funding, but we do know that there, and Thursday night too, we'll talk about this later, Thursday night they'll be here in town, ADOT will be. So is that, when we start talking about our developers along the 505, and we've talked about this for a few years and several years, as to what the 505 was going to do to our developers' land? What were they going to be able to do with their property? And I think this is one of the first things that we're going to see as one of our first developers, seeing something that they can do with their property instead of building houses up against the 505. And I think we're going to start seeing that a lot throughout our whole town, throughout the whole East Valley, I believe also. Another thing, as we start looking at revenues for any areas, industrial areas, is this the right place for it? And I know that the question was, is this, is this the plan? I think this starts to look at all the plans as we go through, again, the 505 is changing a lot of the landscape along there and what we're going to be seeing there. I realize that there is some revenue with this. I know that there's not a bunch of jobs, a lot of revenue, there's a lot of one-time revenue for this, but it is revenue. And as we talk week in and week out here about our dwindling revenues and trying to use the best that we can for these properties. So I will say that I have no other questions for you. I think the questions that Planning and Zoning ask you and then subsequently, I know we've had other conversations as far as with the town manager, town manager back and forth, you know, answering any of our other questions. So that's all I have for me, so I will open it up to the rest of the council. Any council have any questions or comments? Councilmember Bencina.
I've looked at this project and have watched what's going on up there for a while and, you know, the one thing I hear in Florence is we don't need more houses, we have a lot of them coming. I have a friend that's in solar and battery storage business, managing projects all across the United States and so on. So I was asking him about this and especially the key part was is storage coming from SRP and storing excess power that they have. We're kind of used to talking about solar fields having power that's not being generated, but where SRP has excess power they need to store, I see it as a great benefit for the residents of the town for, and this project's going to provide us that. So I like the revenues, I think the school's going to be very happy to see some additional tax revenues. My question is, is, would be about what is the timeline if this project gets approved that it would be up and running when you get to that point? But otherwise, I like seeing some additional revenues and...
Mayor, Councilmember Bencina, so to answer that question about the timeline, 2028 would be the, when we'd be looking to break ground and, or not break ground, but start pouring pads and begin the construction process, 2030 would be when it would be brought online.
Wow, okay. So hopefully in my lifetime.
Oh, yeah. And that's, absolutely. And this is, this is one of the key benefits of energy storage is it is rapidly deployable to meet the rising demand that does exist.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Maldonado?
Thank you, Mayor. So this kind of ties into myself and Councilmember Bencina when we went over to Florence Gardens a couple of weeks ago and one of the questions our residents were like, what can you do about skip? You know, what can you do about power? So this is it right here. So, I mean, it's so much better to be proactive rather than reactive like skip. So I think this is great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, so thank you so much. I appreciate all this and I've been fortunate enough to have been invited to another potential best project outside of town and I was at the Planning and Zoning meeting. So I just want to reiterate what the mayor said. I think that Chair Frost and our P&amp;Z commissioners did an excellent job with our staff, so not a lot of questions. I do want to validate for those folks out there who are concerned about safety. So a couple of things. Your, one of your earlier pictures showed the battery storage units and they're kind of long and I assume that's one, right? They go kind of in a row. So one of the questions was from Mrs. Maldonado about how, comparing that to a house. So you're saying one of those storage packs, right, would compare fumes-wise to a house?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you and a good comment from Ms. Maldonado. To answer that question, that comparison is yes, one container. And that's what the industry studies have shown is that they have the technology that it's not going to propagate to other containers, so it would be one container.
And as we saw, they're separated, so those battery units have space between them. And as I understand it, in my layman's terms, they have their own individual self-contained fire alarms, fire suppression, yada, yada, yada. So it's unlikely that a whole row of them, multiples would go up in flames.
Even more less likely than unlikely, I would say. So Vice Mayor, absolutely. And an interesting tidbit to share about ES Volta as a partner for developing and owning this, they're a nationwide company. They've got seven in-operation projects like this and since 2017, they haven't had any fires. So, and the technology's only gotten better as Mary Eaton has pointed out as well that the latest codes in the town adopting that, very proactive to be ahead of schedule and ensure that the most state-of-art facility is provided here for the town.
And so just for our peace of mind, I'd like to ask our fire chief, I know he's been involved in this, but one of the questions that came up, and I believe the way it was answered, was you don't need any special equipment to put these fires out, other than water. Is that correct?
That's correct. Currently, there's no special equipment designed for...
Currently, there's no special equipment designed for these.
And you're comfortable with this? You've been involved in this planning?
Yes, we've, we've met with them, had these conversations. You guys did adopt the most updated code as, as the mayor had presented.
Thank you. One of the other questions that was raised by one of the commissioners was the traffic on Judd Road. And this is the type of project that does not drive traffic, correct?
That's correct, Vice Mayor. No, no traffic. There would be a, an operations checkup every, every once in a while, a single, you know, vehicle type, type checkup.
Okay. And my, the last question that was raised by one of the citizens was about the landscaping. And on 6B, one of the stipulations clearly defines the need to have landscaping. So, I think that was covered and I think you have already agreed to that stipulation.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's absolutely right. We've agreed a stipulation that our landscaping will be outside our wall in that 100-foot setback area, so.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Buciala.
Good afternoon.
Hey.
So, I'm not going to lie to you. I was a big no in the beginning. After seeing the news, research, just kind of looking at things, it kind of, if you start looking in one direction, it kind of leads you in one direction. So, I made some calls, talked to the town manager, talked to our fire chief today, kind of did some, some groundwork to it. I'm not necessarily a no anymore. I'm still deciding at this time, taking everything into consideration, what you said, and keeping an open mind because it is good for our town to have revenue because we have lost quite a bit over the past few years. But what concerns me more is the safety of our citizens than any type of revenue that we're ever going to pull in in this town. And after talking with Mr. Snyder today, he did say that this is something that the department can handle with extra resources. So, that would be possibly training, help with another agency. But at this time, with the amount of staff and, you know, I guess, equipment that they have right now, is that fair to say from, from what we, we talked about today? That you feel comfortable being able to handle this with possibly added resources in the future? This isn't something that's going to start tomorrow. So, we have a couple of years to prepare. But I just wanted to kind of clarify that, just in transparency as well.
Yes, that's exactly correct.
Because, you know, like I said, I am more worried about our citizens. And there's not houses far from there, desert in between. On one side, we also have a water source, you know? The CAP is kind of along that area. And I just worry about the impact after or, you know, during. Can you just talk about a little bit of, like, let's say, in 20 years, you guys pick up and leave? What is going to be left there for that area at that time?
Mary Eaton, Councilor, Councilmember Buciala, thank you. And, and I appreciate the, the mindset of being able to, to pursue, you know, the different threads that often we go down when we're setting out different opportunities. I, I, I think I really can stand here and say that ES Volta is a very good partner for the town to have, given their track record. They're, they're one of the first movers in this industry. And so, to have them on your side is really good. And they are committed to providing all of the training and, and resources that are necessary for, for the town, fire department to understand how to safely respond to, to the low possibility of, of, of a fire. And that's, that's completely their, their commitment. As, as had been mentioned, in the eight years of their operation, they haven't had a fire. But still, absolutely the safety of the town is, is the highest of priorities and, and they're committed to that. In terms of, of the long-term use of the site, you know, the initial, kind of the studies and what they're, the operating timeline of a BEST project is, is 20 years. And so, that's, you know, kind of what the warranty, the manufacturer makes, makes these products for. And then, and if there's a transition at that point to, to another use that fits with the character of the area, then, then the general plan and the zoning will be in place to, to transition to another, another good use.
Okay, yeah, because at first, when, when I was a no, I was reading that there was like 30 fires. And then I read worldwide. So, not nationwide, worldwide. There's been 30, I think they call it thermal sensory or thermal runaway fires is what they called it, I believe. So, I just, just in full transparency, I've educated myself in the past month. And I just appreciate our town staff for doing a lot of the legwork for us and, and kind of being transparent with us. So, thank you as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal?
To be honest, doing some research, I, I always say that no matter what you look up on the internet, you look at another page, it's going to say the exact opposite. I, I come from more of a towns' point of view. I've had people terrified of it come and ask me questions. And it's kind of like, I have no clue. I don't know anything about battery storage or anything like that. And there was a lot of good questions asked and answered at the meeting, there really were. My concern is the, the revenue. 1.5 over 20 years. The school getting 4.5 over 20 years. When all the power's going somewhere else. And also, it's also a state where it goes to state before it funds down to the town. And this is concerns that I've had citizens come ask me, people around town come ask me about this project. And like I say, looking up into it, it's, it reads crazy. I don't understand it. I don't know nothing about it. I try to do the best I can. I just, I just would like to see more of a promise for the town of, of the share of revenue and things. The safety concern, like I say, is one way or the other. It's, it's, it's as, it's great, it's horrible. But I just want our citizens to feel more secured in this decision. Because it's, it's, it's a really tough decision. It, it really is. I don't, I, I don't really, I still, I'm still out on it. So, just want to be totally honest, I'm still very much out on this program, so.
Councilmember, Mayor, Councilmember Neal, thank you for the comments. And absolutely, we, we see this as being a project that is going to provide certainly more benefit than, you know, a vacant ag piece is, is bringing to the town. And that is an ongoing increase that, that happens. And stable revenue is being provided to the, to the town over that time period. In terms of other, measuring other benefits that come, there's certainly, you know, some construction value that, that gets generated, sales tax and, and to the, to the town. But that's, that's, that's an upfront boost that's, that's good. The ongoing benefit of a project like this in this part of the town is that it provides the grid reliability for industrial users to come in, for commercial, for businesses to know that they're going to have stable sources of power and that those costs are being kept low. That attracts more good development for the town. And so, that's, that's really one of the key aspects that SRP sees with its modeling of, of seeing, hey, there's, there's going to, there's demand for, for this type of use. So, that's why they put, you know, put this out to, to, to get the, to get someone who can deliver them the energy and support businesses, support, support development. And that's the long-run kind of key aspect that gets provided, that eventually trickles down, obviously, to the town through other, other methods. So, we really see that as being, one of the key benefits is that we're, we're contributing to that. So, there's direct revenue, but there's kind of those, those indirect benefits that we, we see as well.
There's also the fact that, okay, Florence has islands out there. Florence County here, there. Santan is actually going right now to become its own town. The benefits for town of Florence go way down if Santan becomes its own town. Most of that stuff out there will be part of Santan. I've had a lot of residents, what is it going to do for us? What is it going to bring to us? It's all SRP. Most of everybody in town is ARS. So, that's, that's another concern I would like for you to touch on because if they do become a town, most of that land out there would go to Santan.
So, Councilmember Neal, I would say the, the incorporation of Santan is probably separate from, from the benefits that the town of Florence is going to see from this project because this is, certainly there's regional benefits that are going to be seen. But the, the town of Florence has room to grow itself. And that's what, that's what we're supporting here is the town of Florence growth itself. But certainly, you know, the, the power providers, SRP, APS, they, they know that generally, that's why they have this, these solicitations that they put out, that they need, they need power delivery and they need grid stability. That's, that's what they're, they're looking for, for all of their partners. But particularly in this case, it's, it's the town of Florence.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'm going out on a limb, trying to stretch my memory now. But there were several other council members who were with me on the trip when we went to see this other project. And the way it was explained to me, I thought, was that it's not a, a physical energy source that's unique to SRP. And when SRP has an overage, that is sold or moved through the APS line as well. So, as I understood it, this cost of energy could affect the APS customers in Florence. I, I'm thinking it also would attract more industry. Granted, that's in the SRP district. But I think anything that attracts tax-based revenue industry to come to our region helps all of us. So, I understand it's not the one-for-one dollar. But I do believe that that energy source, look, we are in a horrific heat wave. We need power. Artificial intelligence sucks power. So, if the state of Arizona wants to stay competitive and Pinellas County wants to be at the top of that growth, we have to have power. That is just not an option. So, I do believe it does benefit us. My two cents.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bencina.
I, I guess I should have said it when you told me the timeline for, for building this thing. But 2030 is five years away. I'm hoping by then, for people that are worried about fire response, we very well could have a fire station a lot closer than we do today because we have a couple spots offered by some of the developers out there. And possibly in the next five years, there could be some new technology developed to help fight the fires. Who knows what's going to happen in the future? But I was with the Vice Mayor and the Mayor. We did tour one of these battery storage facilities. And they, they assured us that the battery is contained. It's not going to, you know, start another flower, another fire and another, possibly another wall. It'll be, it's pretty much self-contained today. So, I just wanted to bring that up with five years, five years out.
Yeah, Councilmember Bencina, thank, thank you for that. The updates in the codes, I really think it's, it's, it's light years from where it was even, you know, eight years ago when this company began. To Councilmember Buciala's point as well, if you look at the 30, you know, worldwide, if you look at the timeline on those, those are happening with older technology, not, not today's technology where it's advanced, you know, the codes would support that today.
Okay. Does there, any other council member have any other questions or comments? So, I'd add a couple that came up. So, two things. And, and, and I also have had calls and, and we hear this all the time and talk about, and, and we do see it, you know, the battery storage fires. So, so I think what we're seeing, and you can explain this or at least confirm, the majority, not only is old technology, but they're, they're utilized in full buildings of, of battery storage instead of smaller, smaller sections of battery storage. Is that correct? Is that what we're seeing the most of? Because it, absolutely correct. And there's buildings full of battery storage that do literally burn forever. It takes million gallon of water to put them out. I think I just, just make sure, I believe that's what we're seeing the majority of right now.
Yeah, Mary Eaton, absolutely. In, in the public comment, one of the supporters had mentioned a project called the Moss Landing Project. That was an indoor project that got a lot of news because of the, the size of that fire. But it was old technology. It was an indoor site. So, this is completely, it's night and day to, to what that project was. And so, the, the placement of those enclosures, the, the, the industry actually holds out that even if a enclosure were built back-to-back, it's not going to propagate from one enclosure to the next. And so, that's, it's really amazing what they're, they're doing with the monitoring of, of these systems. And, and it's gotten to a really good spot.
Okay, very good. The only other comment I have, and this is probably for staff, either AJ or Andy. So, one of the questions during Planning and Zoning, and, and we get asked this question often, when we have a developer come in to develop, street improvements. And that was one of the things, I, I know that we have a lot of comments from our folks as we talk about development, pays for development. I, I know that this question was asked during Planning and Zoning. And the answer was that the traffic impact study did not require this. So, my question is, and one of the, is basically, because they're doing an improvement, I understand that they're not bringing a lot of traffic to this. At what point does this trigger that? Because it seems to be a moving target. And so, again, I, I like to see the improvements. And I, I do know that some of the projected improvements along that area are going to include the road, roads as well. So, I hope you understand my question. Whoever. Andy's looking at you. So, yeah. That's a, that's a friend right there.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. When we get to the point where we're reviewing a, a design review application, the TIA says what it says. However, you know, the town has a transportation plan. We talk about making half-width improvements. So, how I interpret the code is that, that that would be a requirement of an approved site plan would be making the necessary half-width improvements. If the applicant or town feels differently at that point in time or if conditions or the situation has changed, I think that there would be a much further conversation. As you know, this property is bordered on the east by the canal. Simply making a half-width improvement and not providing the appropriate taper back to the crossing of the canal would be a problem for the motoring public. So, there's a lot of things that would go into finally making that determination. But I, my first answer would be if half-width requirements are required by the town of Florence for their transportation plan, those half-width improvements would be part of the process. If circumstances would allow, circumstances call for, it's a challenge to make the taper or whatever it may be, maybe there's an agreement between the town and the applicant of maybe a payment in lieu of or something along those lines. But it's very hard to kind of look crystal ball at some of this because we don't know what this, the world's going to look like in 2028 as we're, it sounds like we're making our way through the design review process. Specifically, to answer your question though, my understanding of the town code is half-width improvements are required as part of a design review or site plan review and approval.
Okay, so, to, to further clarify, Ormati. So, is my understanding that those are not, those are not planned for this project?
I don't believe we're at that point in time. We're here right now considering a major general plan amendment. I'm sorry, yeah, a minor general plan amendment. Well, next we'll be talking about a major amendment to the Dobson Farms PUD. The site plan that's being shown, is being shown as an exhibit as demonstrating that they've began to review things. But I am not standing here saying that that, that is, site plan has been reviewed 100% and has the endorsement of the town, that, or an approval of the town. That's not the step of the process we're at right now. Again, I would stand by my comment that my understanding of the town code is that half-width requirements would be required. And if circumstances were presented and it didn't, and tapers would need to be considered at the crossing of the canal, all of those things would be considered at the time of design review or site plan review.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
At very minimum, we, that's on the floor now. So, at least it's, everyone's aware. Very good. With that, if I don't see any other questions or comments. So, let me, a little clarification, council. So, I got this, made sure with Lisa. So, when you do a, a motion, you only have to read a very short synopsis of it and not the whole thing. So, I know that everybody looks at each other not wanting to read the whole thing of these things. So, anyway, it would just be a very brief synopsis that you do that. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number- I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 762-25.
We have a motion? Second. We have a motion and a couple seconds. Any other conversation or questions? All right, can we have a reverse roll call, please?
Mayor Eaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Neal. Councilmember Buchalato.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Yes.
Councilmember Bencina.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedford.
Yes.
And I apologize, Vice Mayor Adam.
All right. Nope.
The motion has carried. I called her a council member, so I apologize.
Oh.
Motion has carried.
We couldn't hardly hear you there. So zero, is on, no. All right. Thank you so much for that. So, and thank you to staff and thank you for the presentation. So with that, we will move to item 6B, Public Hearing on Ordinance Number 763-25 and Discussion Approval Disapproval of an Ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, Approving a Major Amendment to the Dobson Farms Planned Unit Development. Two, I, change the, to one, change the site's land use category from residential low to commercial industrial. And two, add battery emergency storage systems to the list of permitted uses under the commercial industrial land use category. And three, to establish a set of development standards, i.e. setbacks, perimeter landscaping, et cetera, for battery energy storage systems use under a PZ-24-40 with stipulations. Mr. Menrum.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Member, Mayor, Council. As the mayor suggested, we're here to conduct a public hearing and take action on a proposed major planned unit development amendment to the Dobson Farms PUD. As Mr. Gillespie presented earlier, he did a wonderful job of presenting the general plan amendment as well as the site plan. I'm gonna touch briefly on some of the highlights and modifications that are proposed to the Dobson Farms PUD. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Gillespie for any additional remarks he would like to make here during this part of the, this part of the meeting. As previously was discussed, we, we've talked about the project site. We've, 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 we've crossed the hurdle of land use designation. We've talked a little bit about adjacent land uses and ownerships. And we've talked about proposed projects by the state and the county, whether it be the future north-south corridor, Arizona 505, or Penale County's proposed project, the Central Arizona Parkway. Mr. Gillespie spoke in, in great detail about other pending applications that will be coming before the council in the months to come. And again, he'll, I'm sure, add to that as he makes his presentation here. The amendment here, the, the, the most important part of this amendment is to identify a battery energy storage system, or BES, as a permitted land use in the Dobson Farms PUD. That is part of this application and is to be considered tonight. Also included in this is a clarification of the setback. As I spoke to in the remarks in the previous petition, as well as Mr. Gillespie, currently the adjacent land use to the west and south is still currently single-family residential. And to accommodate that at this point, the applicant is suggesting that 100-foot setback be listed as a development standard. So it, it seems like they're definitely accounting for that condition. The, the, and I appreciate the remarks you made about P and Z and the commission as they deliberated on both of the hearings for the, the general plan amendment as well as this major general, or this major amendment to the PUD. They did spend a lot of time going through and reviewing this conception, the conceptual application to make sure that we took care of what we needed in the PUD amendment. In, in the, in the staff report, or in the RCA, there are a couple stipulations that are included that I think are, are important to consider. The first is that this, this project was conditioned on your approving the minor general plan amendment. That stipulation probably is no longer valid since you've taken action on the previous item 6A. The stip, a second stipulation has specifically to do with this perimeter setback that I just spoke about and, and, and knowing that it needs to, needs to be there. I, I do, I would have to say though, though, in the future, that if the council's pleasure is to amend the, the general plan in the surrounding area of Dobson Farms, that I would imagine the development, the developer, as well as the town of Florence, may wanna consider what that setback is. And, but right now, based on the present time, the surrounding properties are still zoned residential per that PUD. So we would ask that that stipulation of 100-foot setback be, that the stipulation be restated, but, but to the point that it is already a proposal in their, in their, on their conceptual site plan. As for many of the other items that they'll be looking at in that development of that site plan for the battery energy storage system, we, they did, and we did, as staff and Planning and Zoning Commission, walk through the different development standards that are applicable to Dobson Farms as it relates to this land use and what would become the, the site plan. And, and that is all identified in the staff report. The applicant very methodically went through those standards and, and those are all spoken to in this report. Again, I hoped to not be too long-winded, but I noticed that I'm getting long-winded and I would hate to take away any of Mr. Gillespie's thunder. So let me continue. I know he'll touch base on that, so let me do my part. This major, general, major planned unit development amendment did require a neighborhood meeting, a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as a public hearing tonight. The neighborhood meeting was held on Wednesday, March 5th, 2025, at Magma Ranch Elementary School. There were no attendees at that meeting. The, it was determined that the applicant did comply with all the notification requirements of the town of Florence at that time. This matter was also heard in public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission of June 5th, 2025. There were questions asked, as you spoke to earlier. Those are all articulated in the staff report. Ultimately, I believe the commission felt that their questions were adequately answered by the applicant. And the Planning and Zoning Commission took action to forward a favorable recommendation for your approval as it relates to this application, again with those stipulations that I spoke to earlier. Specifically then to the staff's findings, the land use request will increase the mixed commercial industrial development opportunities and is already in line with many of the development standards identified by the commercial industrial zoning within the Dobson Farms Planned Unit Development. The major PUD amendment request will not severely impact surrounding traffic circulation and considers emergency service access. The amendment takes into account and consideration landscaping and the parking needs of this proposed land use and that the public notification effort was, was, is complete. And we have, as staff, received no comments on, on the proposal. In terms of what your vote means this evening, a vote no would mean a denial of the Dobson Farms major planned unit development amendment and the ordinance would result in the current language of the Dobson Farms staying the same. A vote yes this evening on the Dobson Farms major planned unit development amendment and ordinance would result in any future development of Dobson Farms being subject to the new conditions and policies adopted by this proposed amendment and ordinance. And thank you, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Gillespie for, I believe, a little briefer presentation on his project.
Thank you.
Mayor Eaton, you were complimentary of the, the Planning and Zoning Commission. I agree, they really gave a robust conversation about the project specifics and, and I would like to compliment the council as well that I, I think we've had a very good discussion about these type of projects and, and the benefits and, and the considerations to be made. So I, I'm happy to, to ask any follow-up questions that you might have. The one item I, I thought to put a little bow on was, was related to that, that traffic improvement, that development impact fee that we'll be paying to the town. We see that as, as a really key aspect where we make our contribution to, to public improvements and, and so we're, we'll be contributing to that. And then when we get to the site plan stage as well, we're happy to, to work with the town on, on improvements that need to be made in the immediate timeframe. So thank you very much for your attention on this matter and, and we urge support of the, the major PUD amendment.
Okay. Now, once again, then we'll hold any questions or comments from council till after the public hearing. So at this time, I will open the public hearing for ordinance number 763-25. If there is anyone online or in-house and online, raise your hand. In-house, I do have one speaker for item 6B, the public hearing, Kathleen Lehman. Did you want to speak on this one also?
I already included it.
Okay, you're good? Okay, very good. Is there anyone else in-house would like to speak to this or online? All right, not seeing any. I'm now going to close the public hearing for ordinance number 763-25. And I'm gonna open up then questions or comments from council. Anybody in council have any questions or comments? We will slow roll just a little bit before Councilmember Maldonado gets back just a little bit. I didn't have any other questions. Once again, I appreciate the presentation and you did the same thing in planning and zoning. It kinda wraps it all up into one to, to help understand every, everyone on that. So with that, then I would entertain a motion. I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 763-25.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions from council? Not seeing any. Could I please get a reverse roll call, please?
Mayor Eaton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adam.
Yes.
Councilmember Neal.
Yes.
Councilmember Buchalato.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Yes.
Councilmember Bencina.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedford.
Yes.
Motion has carried.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate that.
May I ask one thing, sir?
Yes.
Is that motion with stipulations?
I believe that would be with stipulation number two because stipulation number one is moot now since we approved the minor general plan amendment.
So that's with stipulation number two. Thank you.
Do we still need the stipulation number two in the motion?
No, sir. Just I needed to know if it's approved with or without stipulations. Thank you.
All right, very good. Okay, thank you so much. With that, item 6C, not that the, the first two public hearings weren't fun, this is gonna be fun. So no pressure on you, Amaya. So it, bring us out of this. So it is a report, 6C, a report from Amaya Bandia regarding her attendance at the National Youth Leadership Forum in Washington, DC. Yeah. Where's everybody going? This is the funnest part, you guys. Good evening. We have been waiting on this. So good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor Eaton, Vice Mayor Adam and Councilman. I just wanna say thank you for the opportunity to allow me to go to Washington, DC. Washington in the summer, not a recommendation. The humidity was horrible. At least I did not get rained on the week before. So I never thought I'd say this, but I missed the dry heat. But Georgetown is a beautiful campus, is a walking campus actually, but it's beautiful. When I walked into this program, national security, I thought it was just military. Then when I had an amazing teacher who actually...
Excuse me.
Oh, yeah.
There you go. Thank you. Just get a little bit closer. There you go.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
When I walked into the program, I was questioning what is national security? And it was, in my opinion, I thought it was military. That's what I thought it was. And then throughout the week, I learned that it's bigger than military. On the first week, oh, the first day actually, it was a lot of lesson just to get a foundation on what was going on. So what national security was, which doesn't, does involve military, but military is actually the last resultant that they wanna use. So they use intelligence, which I did not know that the CIA, CIA works outside of the nation, of the United States and FBI works within, did not know that. There is a big cyber, they're growing with cyber as cyber is growing in this with the use of technology. On, hold on, I have to think of the days. On Tuesday, I was able to go to the Department of State, which they are more of a diplomacy, which they care about the relations within the United States and other countries. That one, that one was pretty cool. We had one of the, wait, one of the representatives, she did an embassy around the country, how each, how her career worked, how she raised her family over there and was, learned multiple languages and then came back so her kids can finish high school over here. With that, we were unable, we were unable to go to the Washington DC, the Capitol Building as there was a protest going on the week before, so they, they didn't want us to go as the safety of the students. On Wednesday, we went to the Pentagon. Within the span of 15 minutes, I walked a mile and a half and that was impressive. From the part of the building that we were in with that, it is seven stories and I was able to visit the 9/11 memorial, which I thought it was really beautiful inside and outside. So little did I know that the benches in the outside memorial represent, if they're facing towards the building, they were in the building of the incident. And if they're facing away from the building, they were on the plane. So I thought that was kinda interesting. Friday was the one, was the day that we went outside of the campus, like that's where we visited Arlington, the Naval Academy. Maryland is very humid. That I do not recommend that. We, it was so hot and I wore jeans and it stuck to me. I should not have done that. Naval Academy is very beautiful. We went to the cathedral, oops, sorry. The cathedral, which is, I thought was really beautiful as that is my religion. Then we walked around like the campus and one of the places, so there's a gazebo in like maybe like a half, no, quarter of a mile. It used to be like an old house, like in 1700s. Before they tore that down, they found the old orig, like a copyright of the Star Spangled Banner, which I thought that was kinda cool. The traffic was horrible, humidity. We went to Arlington. Arlington is kind of unique as it is top security as I did not know that you had to go through a background check to go through Arlington. And the walk wasn't really that bad. Uphill, we went, we saw the changing of the guard. That was really beautiful. I wish that they did not have everyone recording because you're like watching and everyone's like recording, so you have to watch at that. But it was still beautiful regardless of the area you were in. A person from my group, he is a really close friend of mine to this day, he was able to put a wreath down with, while they changed it. So that was kinda interesting. And then, uh, we went to go get dinner in Old Town Alexandria. Then we went to all the memorials, so Lincoln, World War II, Vietnam. I did not know there was two Vietnam memorials, one for the woman and one for the men. I did not know that. Hold on, I have to count. World War II... World War II, the, it was a war memorial in DC, it's a little gazebo, Lincoln, Washington Monument, Vietnam, in Korean, yes. I thought the Korean was really beautiful, because we went at night, and the sunset was really pretty with the memorial, so. And Saturday was our stimulation. It was a seven-hour stimulation, but when you're actually doing the stimulation, it didn't feel like seven hours. So, I learned that I'm more of a diplomatic, instead of an intelligence, as I like to improve relationships, so, it's kind, it was kind of stressful, as one come, you didn't know what intelligence was doing, but diplomacy, you were just worried about keeping your allies and having neutrals turn into allies, using neutrals to go against countries like North Korea and China and Russia, so that was kind of cool. And then, we would all get, like, not upset, but like, what happened with this, because it was top secret, and then, we also learned how media plays a big part in the government, as it can make someone look really bad, but they're just trying to look out for the best of their country. That was kind of interesting. And Sunday was, like, the worst day, as I had to say goodbye to all my friends, as they all live in the East Coast, and there was one who lives in Washington State, one that lives in Texas, and everyone, one in Georgia, New Jersey, New York, and Virginia. So, it was kind of cool. There was also, I was the only one from Arizona, I had one, her name was Jamie, she was from Sarawate, Arizona, and I didn't know until the last day, there was a guy from Marana. So, that was kind of cool.
Well, very good. So, this is everything that we had hoped that you would see. The humidity, yes, anybody that's from there, yeah, humidity is very bad, and it is worth mentioning more times than one, so...
At least I did not experience the rain the last day that we experienced, like, the last day when we were departing from the campus, that was the rainstorms, but I was okay with that.
Great, great. And it sounds like you've made some friends that you'll have in a lifetime, which is so awesome. So, I want to open it up to council for any comments or questions. Councilmember Bucelato.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for representing us so well, and I'm bummed you didn't get to go to the Capitol, because the private Capitol tour is probably my favorite thing, besides Arlington, over in, in Washington, DC. They actually have a part where if you, in a group, stand in a certain section of the floor, you can hear everything that's going on on the other side, and that's how they used to figure out what was going to happen. So, that's pretty cool, and the Secret Service carries challenge coins, so if you ever challenge them, you will get a challenge coin back from the Secret Service. And I took, and I have one, so if I find it, I'm going to get it to you. If I can, if I can figure out where it's at in all my coins, I will get it to you, because I had went out to dinner, and with dinner came a couple beverages, and we're walking back to our room, and I said, "I'm going to challenge the Secret Service," and they're like, "Don't go over there." And I went like this, and he had one, and so I have a challenge coin from the Secret Service. So, if I can find it, it's yours. And I just wanted to say thank you, because I'm really proud of you, and you took a chance, and, you know, that's really awesome, so thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
So, thank you for that report, and congratulations, and I hope your experience has lit a fire in you to continue reaching out and making new acquaintances across the country, across the world. You're a great ambassador for us, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bedford.
Thank you for representing Florence, and I'm hoping, well, I want to ask you a question. What are you going, once you graduate, what are you going to do?
To do in criminology, yes, so, that was one of my main majors, and then probably a minor in psychology.
Councilmember Neal.
Yes, ma'am.
I tell you, just by listening to you, I'm going to talk to you on my case. Follow your dreams and do what you need to do for yourself, and then come back and do something here for Florence.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for giving us that, um, word, still.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Neal.
I just want to make sure she was done.
I don't know, I think we're good, I think we're good.
Number one, did you bring back any change? Because we're going to throw that back in the budget.
Change?
No? Okay. Got to try. Number two, are you sure that's your dad?
Oh.
I grew up with him. We are not that smart. Mostly, all we did was running the people full speed, I'm telling you. I think, I think you did a great job representing Florence, put them Gophers on the map, thank you, awesome. I wish we could have sent the whole entire school, that would have been great, but thank you for the experience, and I, I hope, just to say that the high school is getting some way hint, hint, for you to share some of this information with other students, maybe we light a fire on a couple of more students to want to go and do things like this. Good job, add a gopher.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Thank you, Mayor. So, first of all, I'm glad you got to go. I've already been there twice, this past February and last February. So, did you get to go to the Women's Museum at Arlington?
Uh-uh.
Okay, so if you ever get to go back, it's really great.
Well, we were able to go see John F. Kennedy's gravesite, and then, one of my friends, she had one of her great-grandfathers buried over there, but since Arlington's such a big cemetery, it was very difficult for her to go see that.
Okay. Second thing was, I told you I was going to ask when you got back about teen council, and I remember talking to your daddy, so I didn't forget. So, this is the time where you can say, like, do I have the time, you know, do my parents support this, so, the question's still there, like, teen council. And with that being said, also, this is a good thing to bring back to the teen council, so, if you're, if you're able to come to the next teen council meeting, which I think is this?
Thirteenth.
The thirteenth, so if you're able to come and, and talk about it with the teen council, that'd be great, I think, and hopefully, that's something that can, they can take back some of those experiences when they come with us to League of Cities here in a couple of weeks. And who knows, maybe if we have a last-minute dropout, maybe we'll have a position open, so, for a certain person that went to DC. So, and then, last but not least, I was going to get with your dad and your mom offline about, I think you'd be a really potential candidate for either Girls Nation, or Oratorical, or something along those lines, or maybe even ALICA, so I'll talk to your parents offline. Thank you.
Councilmember Bencina.
Well, just real quick, because everybody said everything, but I hope the superintendent back there give you at least ten volunteer hours for your school year, so...
I already have my forty hours.
Oh, you have your forty? Oh, well. You gave her forty?
Yes.
Anyway, I'm glad you had a great time and a learning experience, and those friends that you met from back east, I know with today's FaceTime and everything and texting, hopefully you still have those friendships going and see where your life goes.
Well, they were currently blowing up my phone, I was, we were, I'm sitting in the meeting. It would be, like, some random crap, where it's like, "Oh, look how big the spider web is," and then they're like, "Oh, look, Spider-Man came up to your house."
That's awesome. All right, thank you so much, we appreciate you, hopefully see you back and forth here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amaya. Oh, what a great job, we appreciate that. Item, continuing with the fun, item 6D is our update from Paul Felker, Executive Director of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. It's a hard act to follow, Paul.
Yes. Well, I think everyone left, because I think the word was out, that there was a chamber update tonight.
Not true.
But to everyone's relief, it's going to be short, sweet, to the point, so. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and esteemed council members of the town of Florence. If you don't know me, my name is Paul Felker, and I am the Executive Director for the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for providing me with this time to provide a brief, yet concise, yet very informational update on the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. First, I will recap some recent events that we've done. The first was Talk of the Town, which I think a lot of people here attended. Second was our annual Casino Night. Third was the Airbnb ribbon-cutting at Matt Athos last Thursday. We did our monthly Lunch Mob at A&amp;M Pizza, and then we also did our Monthly Mixer at Anthem Grill. And we also have new programs at McFarland, which we did a program with Toggenburg Goats and another one with Kaywood Farms, and those have been highly successful. All these programs were very successful, especially with Casino Night, I think that night went very well. Some recent programs, news, and projects. First of all, I want to talk about our new hires, Anna Brown, and she's here tonight. She is our new full-time Director for the McFarland State Historic Park, and Candy Domke, who is our full-time Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce Administrative Assistant. Both have been wonderful. Other news and projects that we've done is the brand-new website launch, and of course, our new business directory. Some of our upcoming events coming up, we have a, our Monthly Mixer this Thursday at McFarland State Park, and our hosts will be Hospice of the West, Research for Life, All About You Senior Placement Services, and Angel's Care Home Health. So, that should be a very good event that starts at five o'clock this coming Thursday. We have our Lunch Mob later in the month, details to come, and that will be at LB Cantina. Our Women in Business is on September 10th, and we will be restarting our Farmer's Florence Market starting on September 20th. Some of our upcoming programs and projects we have are the new McFarland State Park social media page, so we're going to start a new social media page just from McFarland. We're going to keep our ongoing McFarland events, such as the Kaywood Farms and the Toggenburg Goats. We will be starting a new project for a brand-new Florence street map, starting in the fall, and then we have ongoing plans for Small Business Week, which is coming up in November. We have many other plans coming too, but I'll save that for next month. All that being said, I think all those have been greatly successful, but I think their success is directly related to what I want to talk about next, which is our actual improvements that we have done at the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. So, our main one is our chamber database, which is 100% updated and very accurate. We sent out a mass email last week, and we only had a couple of bounce backs, and we've already got those repaired. That new website has allowed us to have new members sign up online, which we've had three in the last week. We've been able to have events sign-ups, and we take payments on the website. So, that has streamlined the whole process tremendously. Talking about that is our chamber member engagement, so that was one of our goals, was to have better chamber member engagement. We're up to forty new members since the first year, and I do an ongoing list on our newsletter every week, and keep adding to it every week, and I think a lot of people like seeing that who's new, and it's kind of fun to do. Our McFarland Gift Shop, we have, Anna has put in a new system, streamlining our inventory and the sales, and it's been 100% spot-on, and she's, kudos to her, she's doing a great job at the McFarland Gift Shop. We just installed with a brand-new, actually, a special Board of Directors meeting last week, we just approved brand-new bylaws, and a brand-new employee policy and procedure handbook, so those will be going into effect starting next week. At the beginning of September, I will be attending the ACE, which is the Arizona Chamber Executive Organization Conference and Flagstaff, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity to gain experience and from other executives on their best practices and what they do. So, I'm looking forward to that, and we'll also be hosting the Penale County Chamber Consortium on October 30th at McFarland State Park, so I volunteered for that, so I think that's another great opportunity, and we'll be doing it in the courtroom, so whoever wants to come by, we can check it out, it's a, it's a great meeting. So, overall, you know, the chamber has made big strides, and I'm very proud of what it's done, and I'm very happy with what it's done, and I think a lot of people in the community are also very happy with it. So, thank you for the time tonight, and I'm open to any questions or comments.
Thank you very much, Paul, and we appreciate the partnership as well. Is there any questions or anything for Paul?
I do.
One question.
I do. So, I like to support, I try to go when I can, but unfortunately, sometimes the meetings fall when I have liaison duties, because outside of here, we also on commissions and boards and liaisons. Could you, like, twice a year, move the day to, like, a rotating day, like, every six months, so those of us that can attend on that Thursday night, it's, you know, six o'clock, maybe we can try, because I would love to support.
You bet.
It's a big deal to me here, that our businesses are taken care of, and our chamber is, is good and healthy, and you guys are making big strides, I just, that's one thing that I know is hard for me to go, so I'm assuming I'm probably not the only one, and, you know, I mean, just, even if it's one time a year, I would just like to be able to make it to something like this, this Thursday.
Yeah.
The 5:05 meeting is going on for the transportation, at the same time at the high school, and so it's, I'm hoping to get out of there early enough to still come over, but even if it wasn't that, it would be probably one of the other boards that I'm on, so I just, just kind of throwing it out there, if maybe once or twice a year, you guys can move it a day or something.
You bet. So, and actually, it's funny that you mentioned that, because I just mentioned that right before the meeting started with somebody, and how that always seems to fall on planning the zoning nights. So, we're very flexible, it's not written in stone, we can move it in order to get more from the council, or for anyone in the town there, so, I'm all for that, and definitely, so, I appreciate the suggestion, so.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Thank you, Mayor. So, with that being said, I won't be there this Thursday. I'm unfortunately being in Indy, so if, as a liaison, so if any other council member could go in my place, I would really appreciate it. And I would also suggest, like, if we can't switch it, like, maybe one night, you and I can switch, like, liaison duties, if you had to, so.
Definitely want something after.
Sounds great.
Well, that's a great idea, and Wednesday nights, I don't think we have anything going on Wednesday nights, so, you, so is there any other questions or comments in council?
I'd like...
Vice Mayor.
So, I'd just like to congratulate you, I think the chamber's doing just great. I'm sorry I missed Casino Night, but I want to welcome again Anna Brown and Candy Domke, and Anna, I know Suzanne, of course, from Toggenburg Goats, and Nancy Kaywood, and I think you've been doing a terrific job revitalizing some local programming, so keep it up.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, Councilmember Bencina.
I just want to congratulate you on your website, I think it's awesome, the way it turned out. And then, Councilman Bedford and I can't make Thursday night, we'll be in Phoenix at a conference.
That's okay, I mean, there's, sorry, I missed one, we can do it. I'll fill you in when you get back.
Sorry, I've missed a couple with some other scheduling, so, but thanks for keeping my name on the front page.
Yeah, it's, it's there, in bold, if you noticed, yeah.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I appreciate you. Okay, thank you.
We'll see you soon, thank you so much. Item 6E, continuing with the fun, Mr. Knutson, this is, you've got, keep this a rolling, this is an update from Chris Knutson, Superintendent of the Florence Unified School District. Good evening, sir, school has started, you don't look, you don't look too worn out yet.
All right, your Eminence, Eaton, and council members and community, my name's Chris Knutson, I'm Superintendent of Florence Unified School District. I'm just here tonight mostly to thank the town for the relationship that we have, you guys have been instrumental. You know, we get a million-three every year for school resource officers, and it's been really challenging to, to get officers in our schools, and you guys have done a great job at helping us get three SROs in our schools. School safety's the most important thing. Every day we turn on the news and we see a mass shooting somewhere, so, I think we all need to do more to make sure our kids are safe. Also, you know, how we're funded, we're funded on average daily membership, so basically, we're funded on enrollment. Years ago, a lot of people don't know this, but years ago, it was prior-year funding, so at the end of the school year, however many kids you had in your district, that's what you were funded on the following year, and then if you grew, they give you more money. Well, they changed the funding, how we're funded now, to prior-year funding. So, basically, what happens is we have to guess, try and guess what our enrollment is going to be. And last year, I guessed... And last year, I guessed wrong. So, we, I guessed that we were gonna be flat in enrollment. Now, you guys are all aware of school vouchers and what was added last year into, uh, uh, state choice for parents, and, um, I'm all for that. But, um, our problem is that we lost 2% of our, our population, which means we're on a 70-plus million-dollar budget. Five million of that is, is set aside for capital. So in last year's budget, we built it on being flat, and we lost 2%. So in turn, we had to, because of that, we had to move 4.7 million dollars from capital into M&amp;O in order to get through last year's budget. What that means is, you have to make cuts. And that means people and programs, when those types of things happen. I don't have a crystal ball, so we built our budget this year on a 3% decrease in enrollment. And this is happening all over the state. It's, it's, it's a nightmare for educators to try and address. So I was thinking about, one of the cuts was gonna be our Behind the Wheel program for driver's ed, because we moved all the capital over in M&amp;O, and we needed a driver's ed car. But then I looked at the cost for parents to take their kid to Behind the Wheel at some of these private companies, it's upwards of $2,000. And we were charging 150 for kids to drive behind the wheel, so I thought, well, heck, I'm pretty sure, talked with Tony and talked with Bruce, I'm pretty sure you guys have some vehicles that, uh, you got sitting over here that, uh, might have 100,000 miles on them, that maybe you could donate to the school. So that's what you guys did, and we're able to save Behind the Wheel, um, as a result of this. And, uh, I just wanted to come down and thank you. Now, how will we deal with this problem going forward of having to guess what our enrollment is gonna be? And hopefully, we didn't get it wrong this year. But let's say we did, we, you know, we'll get funded eventually. Right now, we're down a little bit, but, um, we got two pieces of property up on, one's across from Sonic in Santan Valley, and one's on Empire, uh, off of Gary Road. 26 acres and 23 acres. We will never build on those properties, because there's 12 charters, Publix, Queen Creek, Combs, ALA, Legacy, there's 12 schools right there in a very small footprint. We need to sell that property. So there's gonna be an initiative, uh, on the ballot in November to sell those two trunks of property. At 400,000 an acre, that could give us a little buffer to, to get through the, the, these changes in, with dealing with school vouchers and all the changes that are happening in our state. So that's one thing. I mean, that could mean upwards of $20 million that we could use to, for programs, for, um, you know, capital items. I mean, some of our schools are getting to be 20 years old. How many of you have a house that's 20 years old? You need new windows, you need new roof, you need new AC. Well, with $5 million in capital every year, that's not enough to buy buses, to buy AC units, it's not enough to, it's not enough. So we're gonna, we're gonna go, another initiative is on the ballot is gonna be a bond, um, a bond measure for $98 million, and, um, this will go towards safety. I mean, I, I don't know if any of you guys have walked in our schools, but, um, we wanna, just like in this building, here, you got bulletproof glass up here. So, somebody comes in, there's bulletproof glass, if it's a bad guy, the school can be locked down. Um, I'd like to have metal detectors in our, in our high schools. Um, I think everything that we can do to make our schools safer, we need to do it. We need HVAC. Um, if you know, we've, we've gone, it's been a great year so far. We moved to a K6 middle school, 912 model, and it's been awesome. But we need to renovate the, uh, Florence Middle School. It needs to be renovated, it'll take about $13 million to do that. I don't know if you've been in the district office at all, but that, that used to be Florence, the old Florence High School, it's a beautiful historic building, and, uh, I believe that if the bond, you know, if we get this taken care of, uh, we can renovate that facility. We, we have, uh, fire, uh, systems that need to be updated, we have intercoms that need to be updated, we have buses we need to buy, we have grounds updates, um, there's a lot of things, about 100 million dollars in needs that we have, and that would be 20, I don't know, 20 years until we would get that twen, that money from the state, so, um, and what it's gonna do, what's it gonna do to the secondary, uh, tax rate? Well, we're looking at a huge cliff coming up, because so many move, people are moving out here, the secondary property tax rate is gonna drop big time. So this is a time, if, if we're ever gonna go out for a bond, this is a time to do it. Um, so, I don't know, if you guys have any questions for me?
Does any council members have any questions? Councilmember Bencina?
Uh, I don't have any questions, um, I just want to, to give a big kudos out to you and your, your team, because you had a 98% retention rate this past year. That's up 5% over the previous year. I remember last year, I sent you a note, I'm reading, Quinn Creek had an 83% retention rate.
Yeah, seven years ago, our teachers, we had a 75% retention rate, and, uh, last year it was almost 98%. And guess what, when, when you don't have to hire new teachers every year, you can build capacity and kids can grow, because you retain all your great teachers, um, preliminarily, this is embargoed, but, um, to, I mean, we haven't had an A school in quite a few years, though, that, looking at the data, it looks like we're gonna have two A schools this year, and a bunch of Bs and a couple Cs, so, you know, when you have good teaching going on, um, kids grow academically, and, uh, that's what we have going on in FUSD right now, 100% of our administrators stayed, so I'm really happy about that. Uh, this is a great town, this is a great community, and, um, I moved my family out into Florence Unified six years ago, and we love living here. It's, uh, great people.
All right, Councilmember Buchalato?
I was just gonna kind of mimic that, just let us know how we can help, let us know what we can do. Um, I agree, I think especially this homeschool here needs, needs some updating and some security measures for sure.
Absolutely.
And, you know, this is the oldest school, but it's still hanging in there, and I know last year there was a little small fire in the air conditioning, and, I mean, everybody did phenomenal, but there was hardly any shade structures for them to go under when they had to get off property, so I, I agree with you, I think there's some updating that definitely needs to be done, and, um, I'm excited you guys are getting ahead of it and, and trying, so just let us know how we can support you, because it starts with our kids, so.
Well, there'll be a kickoff meeting, hopefully at the Elks Lodge coming up here, I'll let everybody know, I'll be barbecuing, so, uh, you can come out and eat, and we'll go over a lot of things that we got planned for the future in FUSD.
All right, Councilmember Maldonado?
Thank you, Mayor.
So, just in case I happen to miss that Elks meeting, right? Because I'm the legislative guy there also. So, do you guys have plans anytime soon, or, um, here in Florence, like, uh, starting a ROTC program?
Well, all, we have a junior ROTC program at, at Post and Butte, where we bus all students from Florence, so from Florence proper, and then Santan Foothills, they can enroll in that ROTC program. It's really hard to get a program in, in our schools. We applied years ago, and, and they granted us one at Post and Butte, but we have opened that up for, uh, all of, all kids in FUSD, so.
Thank you.
That opportunity's there.
All right. All right, with that, sir, thank you, I appreciate, you know, and, and it is, we go back, just like Paul said a while ago, and, and with you as well, our partnerships are very important to us, uh, in this council, making sure that we maintain those. And I know between the school district, Councilmember Buchalato, with, as far as our liaison, uh, we really appreciate that, so, good seeing you again, I hope to see you soon.
And I do have my board president, Roger Beatty here, so.
Oh, yeah, we seen him over there.
I need to recognize him.
We, we, we thought that's who that was. Good to see you guys, thank you so much. All right, with that is item number seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled in a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member objects at the time the agenda item is called. So, tonight, we have a rather extensive, um, agenda on here, and, as far as a consent agenda. So at this time, would any council members like any, any items pulled? Or the town manager, any items pulled?
Uh, yes. Um, staying with, the last time we had a council meeting, I said that anytime there was gonna be some money spent, I felt we owed, we owed the, the residents some explanation of it in the presentation, so I'm asking that item A, B, C, D, and E be presented and pulled from consent at this time.
Okay, Councilmember Bencina will pull A, B, C, and D. Any other council members or town manager have anything else to pull?
E also. Oh, excuse me, E, pull it, not, not on E, it's only $250.
Okay, so, back me up, A, B, C, and D.
D.
Okay, that's it, all right. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus, uh, items A, B, C, and D.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as written minus items A, B, C, and D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, thank you so much. So, if you're wondering what's going on up here, so, our vice mayor has two bad arms right now, and I'm pushing her button to speak, and then I'm turning it back off. So, you see the craziness going on up here, this is what's going on. All right, so, with that, item A is the approval to enter into a contract with Weems Asphalt to repair portions of Merrill Ranch Parkway and American Way in the amount not to exceed $114,498.60. Good evening, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Um, this is a project that, we've got a couple of settling issues around our bridges over the, um, magma flood district, uh, Wash area. We had some settling, and so we're gonna go in there and fix those, those two spouts right there by the, on both of the bridge locations. Excuse me.
Okay, is there any other specific question for him on that? Okay, all right. Uh, so what we'll do is we'll go ahead and read the B, C, and D, we'll get that cleared, and then we'll go for a, uh, motion to clear them all. Item B is to approve entering into a contract with Shade and Net through the Mojave Educational Services Cooperative Contract, number 20Q Shade 0402, in the amount not to exceed $91,627.26 for the installation of shade structures over the bleachers for Jason Lopez Memorial Park Ballfields and the Little League Field. Good evening, Mr. King. Was there any specific questions for him?
No, uh, just, we just...
Present on him, and then I also, this is a budgeted item with a little, little larger budget, so there's some additional shading to be procure, to be purchased, uh, in the near future with the remaining budget, right?
Would, Mayor, I'm sorry, would you like me to present the item?
Tony, you pulled it off, do you want to present the item?
I would, I would just like folks to know what you're doing.
Sure, absolutely. Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, um, this item is specifically for bleacher shading at the ballfields, uh, both of Little League Park, there's two larger structures there, and there's smaller bleachers at, uh, each of the fields at, um, the sports complex of Jason Lopez Memorial Park. The, the one particular item on the, the shade itself, one, uh, benefit that we're gonna have of this is, we're gonna have mobile shade at the bleachers at, uh, Jason Lopez Memorial Park. They'll actually be on large casters, so we can move them back and forth, uh, slightly, one foot or the other, depending on where the sun is at the time of day or the game is, uh, or also potentially for, uh, events and programs. Councilmember, to answer some of your questions on the funding, um, the, this proved to be a cheaper, uh, project than we anticipated initially. Um, so there, I have been having conversations with the town manager on, on opportunities we have around the town, uh, in shade, for shade as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Paul. Uh, item C, authorization to purchase 40 patrol rifles with optics and suppressors through Scionics Weapon Systems in an amount not to exceed $76,953.08. Is there any specific questions for PD?
Um, the biggest thing I want people to know, this is a budgeted item. Um, and if you read the RCA, you'll find out that our, our police force has had, on loan from the Department of Defense's DRMO, their salvage yard, rifles from the Vietnam era, so I'm really looking forward to these rifles personally being purchased and given our police force, uh, quality, some additional quality equipment, uh, to be used, so I just wanna get that stressed.
Any other questions about that? All right, item D, authorization to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Florence Unified School District to provide school resource officer services.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, uh, good evening. Chief Thomas is currently not with us tonight, he's at training. So this is an item that, uh, council, uh, swiftly wanted to go ahead and make sure that we get, uh, three school resource officers on the grounds. This IGA is the agreement between the town and the school to make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Fantastic, we, we heard it earlier, we've been talking about this for some time, and thank you so much for working through what you've done with that. With that, then, I will entertain a motion to approve A, B, C, and D as an interconsent agenda.
I'll make a motion, we approve consent items A, B, C, and D.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you so much. Item 8, A, in new business, another fun thing here, very proud moment. A, A, notification that the Florence Police Department attained a reaccreditation through, uh, Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, um, I again am standing in for Chief Thomas, he is currently attending training. But I have to go ahead and tell you that, um, when I went down to the reaccreditation, I was so proud of this team. I want to tell you, when we were accredited in 2021, the clock starts again for another four years. So immediately after we got accredited, we needed to go ahead and start collecting proofs to go ahead and make sure that we could get reaccredited. But you all understood that during that timeframe, the police department went down to about 11 officers, so the chief at that time had to go ahead and make a decision whether or not to be actively engaged in that program. We could not do it at that time. So I just wanna go ahead and say, we decided back in 2023 that we needed to go back and collect 174 proofs times three years. There is a member that's not here, uh, tonight, no longer works for the Town of Florence, but I wanna make sure that we give her credit, and that was Manager Morella Borzane. At that time, she went back and collected three years' worth of proofs to go ahead and make sure that we can enter into our final year. I have to go ahead and say that, uh, behind me, we have Commander Rika Mini and soon-to-be Sergeant Tanner Foster. I think he's gonna be promoted, when? On the 23rd of August, I'm so proud of him. But these two, as well as the chief and, uh, Commander Linderoff, engaged in gathering 174 standards to go ahead and make sure that we completed the fourth year. I have to tell you, when I sat up on the commission, um, the commission didn't have any questions. This group got all 174, it was 177 standards, but they got 174. The other three, we weren't required to go ahead and get without any fallacies or errors. That's unheard of in the program. So to see commissioners around the table say, I really don't have any questions, and congratulations, um, that was a major accomplishment. I have to go ahead and tell you, Chief Thomas, and representing the Town of Florence, did an outstanding job. His engagement and the way that he talked about the town and accreditation, I think, really did us proud. So I just wanted to go ahead and congratulate and present to you the Florence Police Department and our...
twenty-five, an ordinance to the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, authorizing the town manager to execute documents for the sale of the Brutencamp Building located at two ninety-one North Bailey Street, Florence, Arizona, APN two hundred dash four-nine dash zero one one zero, to Cody Wadgent, uh, of Wadgent Law. I messed that up, I'm sure. We get, uh, Law Office, PLC for the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars and declaring an emergency. Manager Walls.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. The Brutencamp Building is one of many buildings owned by the town, which we are responsible for the maintenance on. After much discussion, it was determined that we would go ahead and put this building up for sale. We received one, um, um, fair market value, uh, input for a hundred and ninety K, and it was from our current occupant. After a committee review that assessed the, uh, building review, um, by townspeople for at least three times a year, H-Stack review of building work, uh, meeting the building codes, and then deed restrictions, this applicant received a score of three hundred and eighty-eight out of four hundred points. We believe our current applicant knows and understands the maintenance and care of historic buildings, and that this request, um, should council approve, uh, we would receive a hundred and ninety K. These dollars can be used in the redevelopment area, such as Cocapelli's, or in the facade improvement program, and that's just to go ahead and name a couple of examples. So we're looking to see whether council will go ahead and approve the sale of the Brutencamp Building.
All right. Sorry, we were adjusting the fan. I'm sorry for that. We're gonna have to get more fans up here, we're sharing fans also.
Yeah, they're sharing fans.
All right. Sir, sir, thank you so much. I, I will open it up, then, to any council members have any questions or comments to our town manager? No. Uh, I will tell you, my only comment is that, um, this really, and Cody, I'm sorry, I messed up your name, so, um, is that, in, it was very enlightening to, uh, hear or to read, um, that he certainly understands what this building means to the town and the historic district, and it's been proven for the last few years that he understands what he's got into and what he's, and how he's handled it. So, uh, I appreciate that. The only thing, I don't have any other comments. Uh, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance number seven six one two five.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you so much. Congratulations, Cody.
Sold.
All right. Item eight C, discussion approval, disapproval, resolution nineteen thirty-six dash two, a resolution of Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, establishing and adopting the Town of Florence Redevelopment Area Facade Grant Program, update twenty-twenty-five. Manager Walls.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, I am pulling this, uh, agenda item from the, uh, agenda tonight.
Okay. Very good. Item eight C is officially pulled, then. All right. Item eight D is discussion approval, disapproval, amendment number one, with Hills Brothers Chemical authorizing an increase in the contract amount from a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to three hundred thousand dollars for the continued purchase of water treatment and wastewater treatment chemicals. Good evening, Jonathan.
Good evening, Mayor.
Just so you know, that you, you'll get formally introduced, council will get formally introduced here during, uh, the, the following report, but this is just a, a little bit of preemption.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members on the council. Uh, in front of you is a recommended motion to approve, um, an amendment to the current contract for Hills Brothers Chemical, um, adding a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the current contract of a hundred and eighty thousand, so a total amount of three hundred thousand. Um, although this contract remains till twenty-twenty-six, um, with new staff reevaluating our operations, we're confident this number will get us to end this contract and also allow us time to properly budget and plan for our future, um, usage between water and wastewater, so.
Okay. Very good. Any council members have any questions?
Um, just a quick one. So what's your estimate, this, these new chemical buys? How long's it gonna last us?
Sorry, say.
How long would it last us with this additional purchase?
Uh, we anticipate to the end of this contract, at least, so.
Okay.
Pending any unforeseen chemical.
Councilmember Maldonado?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to make sure that we have enough, uh, facilities able to, um, to house this, you know, properly.
Uh, we do. This is, these are ongoing purchases that, you know, when we get to a certain limit, we'll order more to keep our stock. So it's not like a bulk purchase where we just have, um, chlorine cylinders sitting off to the side. We, we evaluate when we get close, we order more and keep a rotating supply.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Not seeing any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve amendment number one with Hills Brother Chemical authorizing an increase in the contract amount from a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to three hundred thousand for the continued purchase of water treatment and wastewater treatment chemicals.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you very much, sir, for that. Item E, discussion approval, disapproval of entering into a contract with Tierra Rightaway Services Limited in the amount of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents for additional land acquisition services associated with the CIP projects T one twelve and SU ninety-eight.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, we're also gonna be pulling this item from the agenda.
Okay. All right. Then item eight E is also being pulled tonight. Okay? Very good. All right. Item nine is our town manager's report. Manager Walls.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I am so happy to introduce a new member of our team tonight. Um, this gentleman has hit the ground running. Uh, you all know some of the complications that we are having out at our, both of our plants, north and south. Uh, Jonathan has come in here, and he has done a wonderful job. I'd like to go and introduce him and have him come to the, uh, podium and, uh, introduce, formally introduce himself to the council.
Good evening, again.
Thank you, Town Manager Walls. Good to see you all, members, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Um, thank you for that, uh, very nice introduction. Um, it's been, uh, an amazing ride for me just so far this, in this past month, um, from my initial application to coming to Town of Florence, the hospitality that's been provided to me, and then being part of this team is, 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 it's been really a true, uh, amazing experience. So, I mean, I have, uh, almost twenty years in the water and wastewater industry, um, all up in Illinois. Um, so my family and I decided that we wanted to get away from the cold weather and raise our young kids in a, um, a warm climate, and we, um, tried this journey for about six years, and it finally aligned, um, and I could not be more grateful for the opportunity to be here in Arizona for my family, but to be, for, working for the Town of Florence. Uh, from everybody on down, it's been an amazing experience, and I just want you all to know that the staff that I get to work with every single day are extremely dedicated to, um, a bright future, um, turning everything around quickly, um, and doing it the right way. Um, they're all committed, they're all happy to, to wear that on their shirt, and, uh, it's, it's made my transition, my, my job so far, um, everything easy, um, just because they're so dedicated and, um, knowledgeable, experienced, and want to do this for the town, for, you know, and that's, that's the goal, that's what we do, that's why we, that's why we come to work, is to provide a service to the town that we work, so, um, I'm excited to be here, I'm excited for the future. Um, you know, I, I said, I've, I've been in the industry for quite a while, but there's always something new to learn, and, um, to be able to work with this staff is, uh, I'm really, really excited for this opportunity, so, um, I look forward to working with you in the future. So, thank you again.
Well, very good. Well, well, thank you, and, and for me, just welcome, um, you've been here a while, you knew what you were getting into, and it's not been a secret that we had some challenges. And for me to hear that you have still excitement in your voice, that makes me feel pretty good. So, you know, when, when your excitement goes away, so does ours. So, anyway, welcome, we, we welcome you, and you won't regret moving from Illinois. So.
I never go back.
Very good. Does any council members have any comments or questions? Councilmember Maldonado?
I wanna say welcome, Jonathan, and I, I'm pretty sure there's another staffer that came from Illinois. So, you, you might know him.
Careful.
Thank you.
I just wanna say, welcome, and if you need any money, let us know, we'll take it away from Andy.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank, thank you again, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Nice meeting you.
Thanks.
All right. Manager Walls, do you have anything else for your town manager's report?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, no, sir.
All right. Thank you. I will compliment you on your weekly update, uh, we appreciate that, it's very thorough, and we appreciate that. Certainly makes your meeting, your, uh, report today shorter when you do that. So, so, um, then, item ten is our department reports, uh, quite a few reports. Does any council members have any comments or questions on department reports? Councilmember Bencina?
I just wanna say, thanks to all the directors, I enjoy reading your reports, actually. I'm still trying to learn how to enjoy IT, but, you know. But, uh, it's, it's tough to understand those charts. But anyway, I appreciate what y'all are putting into the, into the reports and your time and what your staffs are doing. Lot of great things happening. Um, Town Manager, you and I have discussed seek, click, fix, and, and hopefully you'll work on that one. Uh, that, that's the one we need to get some help on, so I appreciate you working on that.
All right. Trent and Tony struggles with graphs, so it's, it's kinda tough on that, so. Very good. Thank you, sir. Anybody else have any questions? Uh, I will also echo that. Thank you to the, the, uh, staff and department directors for your reports, um, they don't go unnoticed, and they are getting better and better. So at that, item number eleven is our second call to the public. Uh, if you were sitting and thought you missed the first call to the public, this is our second call to the public, and I'll open it. If anybody wanna speak to that? All right. Come on forward, sir.
I'm Gordon Lehman, resident of Florence, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I don't wanna spoil what you're probably gonna talk about, but I definitely wanna say we need to have some good representation on Thursday night at the gymnasium at Florence High School, when ADOT is discussing the southern portion of the five oh five, or, as it used to be known, the northern, uh, north-south corridor, or as I like to call it, the ghost highway, since we ghosted in on most of our maps and don't know where it's gonna actually be, but they're getting a little closer now. So we need, and I'm kind of exhorting you as council members, to tell ADOT that we want the southern portion built first, coming up from Picasso and stopping at Hunt Highway, they can then take the road of Hunt Highway over to seventy-nine and get up to sixty. To build the road on the northern portion from Gold Canyon down to Arizona Farms and dump all those semis and traffic onto that road is not a very good plan. So we need to exhort them, there'll probably be a resolution by this council to ADOT of what their order ought to be for this plan. I'm very much in favor of it. The problem will be, is that they're going to dump a northern portion onto Arizona Farms, they're gonna come down Felix. Felix is gonna have seven stoplights on it in the next five, twenty years. I don't know when the north-south corridor, five oh five, is gonna be built, may not be in my lifetime either, but, uh, we definitely need the southern portion, and we need it to stop at Hunt Highway and not go up to Arizona Farms. Arizona Farms is not gonna be four lanes, but Hunt Highway will be, soon, I hope, and then they can do the roundabout and take seventy-nine that way. So I'm gonna exhort you as a council and the representatives of Florence to keep all that traffic on. I know we're gonna help Coolidge a lot, because all that traffic coming down Felix, going down over Attaway, and taking the main highway through Coolidge to get down to ten, when the north-south, northern portion is built first, is not a good plan. So think of your fellow citizens over in Coolidge. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Anybody else? Nobody online? If online, raise your hand. Not seeing anybody. I'm gonna close the second call to the public and call to council. Councilmember Bedford.
I first would like to say thank you, staff, directors. I'm just gonna do this, 'cause we still got work to do this evening. I thank you for, um, doing what you do. I normally don't say anything, but I am gonna say this. Our town calendar, August twenty-twenty-four, February twenty-twenty-five. Come on, we do have to straighten that out. So with that being said, I'm hoping that, um, I'll send Town Manager an email in reference to getting that done, because we have a lot of events and/or other, um, you know, pertinent things, and nobody sees it. So we're gonna have to do a little better, just in that, but it doesn't take away from what you all do at your jobs, and I thank you for that. Secondly, we had our, um, summertime fling, and people are still talking about it, so I'm hoping that we get the opportunity to not just do it once every year. So, we need to exhort them, there'll probably be a resolution by this council to ADOT of what their order ought to be for this plan. I'm very much in favor of it. The problem will be, is that they're going to dump a northern portion onto Arizona Farms, they're going to come down Felix. Felix is going to have seven stoplights on it in the next five, twenty years. I don't know when the North-South Corridor, five oh five, is going to be built, may not be in my lifetime either. But we definitely need the southern portion, and we need it to stop at Hunt Highway and not go up to Arizona Farms. Arizona Farms is not going to be four lanes, but Hunt Highway will be soon, I hope. And then they can do the roundabout and take seventy-nine that way. So, I'm going to exhort you as a council and the representatives of Florence to keep all that traffic on. I know we're going to help Coolidge a lot, because all that traffic coming down Felix, going down over Ataway, and taking the main highway through Coolidge to get down to ten, when the North-South, the northern portion is built first, is not a good plan. So, think of your fellow citizens over in Coolidge, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, anybody else, nobody online, if online, raise your hand. Not seeing anybody, I'm going to close the second call to the public and call to council. Councilmember Bedford.
Good evening, everyone. I first would like to say, thank you, staff, directors. I'm just going to do this, because we still got work to do this evening. I thank you for doing what you do. I normally don't say anything, but I am going to say this. Our town calendar. August twenty twenty-four, February twenty twenty-five. Come on, we do have to straighten that out. So, with that being said, I'm hoping that I'll send Town Manager an email in reference to getting that done. Because we have a lot of events and/or other, you know, pertinent things, and nobody sees it. So, we're going to have to do a little better, just in that. But it doesn't take away from what you all do at your jobs, and I thank you for that. Secondly, we had our summertime fling, and people are still talking about it. So, I'm hoping that we get the opportunity to not just do it once every year. I'm hoping that we can do it more. So, we can have the, the town to have some fun here in Florence. Paul, your team did fantastic. They hit Kyle, Nicholas, and even your guys that came in and volunteered. That, that shows dedication to Florence and to you as being their boss. So, with that being said, I give you kudos to that. That's all I have to say. I'm done.
All right, thank you so much, Councilmember Bencina.
Gordon, you're actually right there. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend either with Councilman Bedford. We'll be attending a summer policy retreat for housing and water policies up in Phoenix on Thursday and Friday. But I have sent some email, and I will reendorse what you just said about doing the, doing our part first, hopefully. Hopefully, we can get our, our legislators involved. I know we, we brought it to Senator Rogers' attention when we had her down here. But hopefully, our legislators from the Florence portion might be there also at that night to really make some headway with ADOT, we got to get everybody behind it. Also, I'm proud to say that I got accepted into the civic craft designing the future of local public service. I just didn't know it was going to be a year's worth of work, so. But anyway, I'm looking forward to it, it's, most of it's virtual, and then there's three trips that I have to take. But I'm looking forward to doing it, it's once a month, and so I'm actually looking forward to participating in it, so. And yes, it was a great dance, and no Kathy, people aren't talking about you, they're talking about how great the dancing was. And it was a good event, I did, so hopefully, we can do more events with some different type musics for other people, too. But yeah, more events in the town is great, so, thanks.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Maldonado.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I, I can't echo enough what, what's already been said, so I'm not going to repeat it. I had the pleasure of going out to Casino Night, and like always, I had a blast. Paul, phenomenal job, thank you to all those that helped make that possible. Anna, great job, it was great, I won so much money and then I lost it all at the end. But I'm glad it wasn't real money. No, so, all seriousness, though, yeah, there's a lot of events going on. So, please, once they're put on the calendar, make sure folks are looking at there. And it's great, because we can try to forecast a little bit, especially with different things going on, on who's going where and what. So, I think trying to forecast just a little bit, it is, is, is good, is a good thing, so. Also, there was a lot of stuff tonight, like, a lot, and we're not even done yet. So, this just goes to three years ago, when I came on and talked about, you know, getting other things, other, other forms of revenue, and, you know, taking some of the, the relief off of taxpayers. So, this is just the first step in, in creating that. And I, I'm very optimistic, so I'm, I'm very happy, so. Thank you, that's all.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Buchalau.
Okay. So, I, a couple of things have already been talked about, but I just wanted to reiterate that meeting on Thursday for the five oh five, it's very important that tell a neighbor, tell a friend, tell a stranger, tell somebody at the mailbox to attend, because as you know, around here, it seems to be strength in numbers. We have sat down at the table with ADOT a year and a half ago and had a really good discussion. And I think this is an opportunity for those of us that can't attend, to attend, and just kind of speak our minds and, and kind of stand up for, for our area and our residents. I also wanted to talk about the calendar, I know the last time that we approved the money for the microphone, I know myself and I remember Tony, and I, there was another one, that we pleaded for somebody to fix the calendar and to use the microphone and to make it interactive and to put little videos or past events. I, I would like to see more of what we're actually out there doing on that calendar and, and for it to be interactive. If I was to ask my mom what's going on next week, and she would have no idea, because she's not on social media. She doesn't know how to work it, she doesn't know how to utilize it, everything she learns about what's going on in the town is from me. So, I just want to keep that in mind. She would know how to Google, you know, town events, but she doesn't get on social media to see things going on in the town. So, I, I have heard what Kathy has said, and I've echoed that quite a few times. So, I'm willing to sit down and to help put in the work to figure out what you want it to look like or what's needed. Nothing I ask you guys, I won't do myself, if I could. So, I will help wherever I can, I would just like to see the events, especially where known in town for our events. And so, to, to not see, you know, those events posted, or not a lot of pictures, or not a lot of interactive things on our calendar. I mean, we're, we're kind of falling a little bit behind on that. So, please, if we could just sit down and, and at least get the current events on there for the next three months, I think that's a start. R and B Night Dance, it was great, it was so funny to see one crew come in from about seven to nine, and then the next crew come in from nine to twelve. At first, we were kind of sitting there like, please, people come, please, but everybody in this town is late. Everybody, at seven-thirty, here comes a whole trove of people, and it was packed. And I could not walk for two days after, because that was the first time I've tried to do anything since my knee surgery, and my knee was mad, and it was not having it. So, that means it was a good night, and there was no issues, everything was flawless. Everybody was just about networking, talking, conversating, and dancing, and it was just really nice. My inbox blew up the next day, please do that again, please do a themed night, please do something every couple of months. And you know what, I think our, our jobs as council members goes beyond this dais at times. And it's not just showing up to events, it's hosting, it's interacting, it's, it's bringing our community together. And I think that, that went off very well, and I'm, kudos to, to everybody on the committee. We only met a couple of times, we kind of said what we needed to say and went with it, and Paul's team stepped in and met with us and made it happen, and I'm very proud of Kyle and his team. The other day, we had the Jason Lopez Memorial Ad Hoc, and afterwards, Councilmember Neil, myself, and some of the ad hoc members went to the park to kind of look for an idea of where the memorial may be placed at. I want to say the number one place we all liked was where the fire truck is right now. But since that's taken, we've kind of located a second location, but in doing so, we walked the entire park, and Paul, it looks so beautiful. That is the most grass that I have seen at that park since I was a child. You can tell that your groundskeepers are doing a phenomenal job of keeping up with that, it's not easy. There's people there constantly, my kid goes three times a week and plays basketball once it gets dark, because it's so hot right now. But there's always people there, it's a high-traffic area, and the fields look phenomenal. So, I just wanted to say, I see you, and I see what your, your staff are doing, and I don't want to just be a person that sits up here and criticizes, I also give kudos where kudos are needed, and, and your staff deserve some kudos tomorrow. So, and so do you. And I just wanted to say also, great job for the weekly report that we receive from all departments. Pictures, it's, it's just a quick explanation, and literally, that's what we've needed for so long. We get approached, regardless if we have anything to do with day-to-day operations or not, which we don't. We, we have to do with directors and things like that within the town, but the public assumes that we do. So, when we live here, we work here, we play here, and we're approached by people asking questions on things happening in their area. And two years ago, we had no idea, it really made me feel personally some type of way. This is a great way for us to get all the information that we need. It's literally a picture and a couple of sentences, but let me tell you, that goes a long way. And it's been nice to feel that I'm educated and that I'm prepared when people ask questions of what's going on in their area, what was that the other day, and we know. So, I just wanted to tell you guys, I know it's a little extra work from you guys, but it is so appreciated every week to get that report from Bruce and to see what you guys are doing. And it's really not about questioning what you're doing, it's really just about informing us so we can be prepared to inform the public, because we're the ones that kind of approach when they see us out there. So, I just wanted to say you guys are doing great, and I'm very proud of the team that's been built here, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Neil.
Couple of things. Number one, I was, I, I go to Circle Can, I get stuck there for a good hour and a half every time when people want to ask me questions, but don't want to show up in the meeting, but number one was the consent agenda. I've had a couple of people talking about the consent agenda, and we need to explain things, and we need to talk about things. The consent agenda is done, so we don't get out of these meetings at one-thirty at night. I think it's a great way we're doing it, takes care of a lot of business at one time. Also, anybody that's out there, a citizen, you can go on the site and read the exact same agenda that I read and that everybody else on this council reads. It makes it so much easier for us, just like with the manager report and the director's reports, it's all there to read. Trust me, I'm not a big reader unless it's Co-Man or Star Wars, but I read it, and you can too. So, it helps us out tremendously. The other thing I have to say is, oh, with a very heavy heart, RIP to Stevie Lopez and the Lopez family. God touch y'all souls. Andy Boy Salazar and the Salazar family, especially after just retiring, God bless that family. And to my little cousin Cedric Collins. It's rough, rough, rough. Also, the, I know there were three or four people said something, but the, the dance, the, the, the party we had. I have to, I have to mention it, too, because I had so many people come to me, when are we doing it again? I missed it, I want to be a part of it, I want to do a vendor. So, I would love to see that happen again before this year is out. So, let's just put that on the calendar now, so we can make it happen. Love you, Kathy. And then, finally, I have to say, Kathy Adams, not going to say what you think I'm going to say. Kathy Adams missed her calling in life, she should have been a singer or an alarm, because if y'all catch our ice bucket challenge, I still can't hear out of this ear from Kathy screaming the entire time at the top of her doggone lungs, I wanted to give her a chop through the throat, stop it! But the ice bucket challenge, if y'all check that out, it's, it's really cool, and it's for a, a super great reason. We challenged our, our district, oh God, what is it? Representative, that's what I'm trying to say. And that was, that was very cool and very wet, and football is back. Go Gophers.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, I'm so sorry, Snake, apologize. I know we were off the month of July, but there were a lot of things going on for me, and I'm just going to talk about two things. And first of all, I want to welcome Director Tony, because you, I don't think there's been anybody more awaited than you to come to our town, and I know you have a big job, but I think you already expressed yourself. You have, you are walking into one fantastic team, and I don't mean just in the Public Works Department, right? Your fellow directors, our town manager, town staff, I mean, it is a wonderful group of people. And I think from where I sit, I see a tremendous camaraderie amongst everybody to get our town where we need to go, so welcome. I also wanted to commend our police department, and I think Town Manager Walls has a place in this, congratulations. Because when we were talking about this recognition, it doesn't happen overnight, that's years of hard work. And you have to be, have all your ducks in a row, right? And so, Rico and the team, congratulations, that is, is just really wonderful. So, the thing I wanted to talk about actually is in Public Works in Water. I was lucky enough, so, I live south of the Gila, and as you've, many of you've heard us talk about, we were experiencing multiple water shut-offs. And so, I had the opportunity with Daniel Ortega, Donald Baker, and Edward Gonzalez to actually see a valve exerciser. So, this applies to all parts of Florence that are not handled by, that are handled by the Town of Florence Water Department. So, that's north of the Gila, over in the Five Parks area, and south of the Gila. So, these valves are critical to maintaining our water supply. And we spent ninety thousand dollars last year to get this valve exerciser, having no idea. I think any one of us did not know what it was. It is so money well, so well-spent. And these gentlemen took me out and showed me on Adamsville and at well number five, how this works. I just want to assure the town and my fellow council members who also live downtown. We have a tremendous team here who looks out and spends every town dollar as if it was their own. So, when they went and they looked for equipment that would help them do their jobs better and faster, they also looked for a trailer to put it on and not tie up a truck, because it's not used all the time, right? So, I'm just saying that the thought process that went into this was pretty amazing, and this is so well-needed. And I feel very confident that we're finally starting to move in the right direction on our infrastructure, and I just want to thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. So, I won't go over everything that everybody said, I will reiterate what some of the, the council members have said about the five oh five meeting at five-thirty on Thursday night at the high school. Please attend, it does, it does matter. I will also like to thank, and kudos to the council for accepting my ice bucket challenge and taking it to another level, now that I found out it was Kathy that was screaming, I thought, I thought it was Nicole, but it was Kathy screaming now, now that I know that. But it was fantastic for a fantastic cause, fantastic message that went out. And I think we can all agree, we all had a good time doing that. With that, tomorrow, I will be at the Station Coffee at seven-thirty in the morning to about eight-thirty, nine o'clock, for Coffee with Keith. I always say, I don't have an agenda, but bring yours, if you have any comments or questions that you have. With that also, I'm sure you all have been wondering when the next moment with the Mayor podcast comes out. We're recording it tomorrow, so, so you are in luck, it's coming out. Like, this podcast is with our own Lisa Garcia. And then, next week, as we've, this council continues to do, we're out of the area, getting in front of people. Arizona, I'll be at the Arizona State Transportation Board, next, the end of next week, attending that, starting to the squeaky wheel and rattle some cages and try, see what we can get done. So, other than that, that's all I have. So, item number thirteen is, we are going to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of discussion or consultations with designated representatives of the public body and/or legal counsel pursuant to ARS Section thirty-eight dash four-three-one point zero-three, to do the following instruction with Town Manager on key assignments, and number two, discussion on contract negotiations related to infrastructure. I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion to adjourn to exec-
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. We are adjourned to executive session.